Gina Barrows, I know you were here, we were talking to you before. Gina Barrows. Gina Barrows. All right, Tion Brooks. Eric Brusitis.
Here.
Eric, Tom Barrows.
Here.
Thank you, Tom. Iris Cabrera. El Caponegro.
Yeah.
Good health. Frank Carbone.
Yeah.
Thank you, Frank. Steve, can you hear me?
Uh, now I can. Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Michael Chiricella. Michael Chiricella.
Here.
Teresa Cinciatto. I can see you, Tish, but I can't hear you.
I'm here, Jerry.
All right, thank you.
Jerry's Mike Chiricella, I'm here.
I got you, Mike. Thank you. Giovanni Tomato.
Yeah, I'm here.
I got you. Thank you. Erin Drinkwater. Erin Drinkwater. Nowski. Arthur Dibidowski. Alkins. Willis, can you hear me? I can see you. Hello? Willis Alkins. Can everyone else hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm hearing.
Yes.
Okay. Amanda Foster.
Here.
Julia?
I'm here.
Julia, Amanda Foster. Hello, Julia? Chairperson Fuller.
Yeah.
Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross. Claudia. Sonia? Oh.
Yeah, Sonia, Sonia.
One of those nights.
Jerry's hard, but I'm here, Jerry. Sonia's here.
I hear you. Moishe Indig. Bosina Kaminsky.
Present.
Thank you, Bosina. Avram Katz. William Klagsbald.
Here.
Ryan Coonan.
Here.
Thank you, Ryan. Yo Landau. Yo Landau. Lianza.
Marie.
Marie Lianza.
Yes, I'm here.
Abraham Liebovitz.
You hear me?
Yes, Marie, I have you. Abraham Liebovitz. Olo. Trina McKeva. Trina McKeva. I don't know, the system's really acting up tonight. Sante Metelli.
I'm here.
Toby Moskowitz. Martin Needleman.
Present.
Rabbi Needleman. Karen Nieves.
Here.
You're Karen. Mary O'Dommerick.
Joel Gross is present.
Thank you, Joel. Mary O'Dommerick. Janice Peterson.
Jerry, I reach out there as present too. Sorry.
Thank you, Iris. Janice Peterson.
Do you hear me? I'm here.
I hear you now.
Okay.
Dana Rackland.
Present.
Thank you, Dana. Bella Sable. Bella Sable. Isaac Soffer. Robert Solano. James Stewart.
Present.
James?
Yes, I'm present.
T.
Here.
Thank you. Tommy Torres. Tommy Torres. William Vega.
Here. Vega here.
Thank you, William. Vieira. Maria Vieira.
Present.
Thank you. Steve Whiteberg.
Here.
Thank you. Simon Weiser. Simon Weiser. Simon Weiser.
You hear me?
Simon?
I'm here. You hear me?
Thank you. Thirty-one members answering the call.
Thank you so much.
I don't know if you heard me.
Find me?
It, I, I got it. It's Tina. I don't know if Jerry heard me. I'm here. And Jerry, uh, Jerry.
Have you marked present, Trina?
Okay, thank you. Bella is here too, Jerry, but they don't have her hooked up right.
If she doesn't have it.
You heard me, Simon?
The only thing I could do if they don't answer the call.
But here she is, she can answer right now. She's on my phone. She called Maria and Marie knows she's on the wrong, they put her on the wrong hookup. So what are you gonna do with her?
Now, Yo Landau, she doesn't know how to get his mic on.
Can she call in? Can she call in from her phone, Jan?
Can you call in? Like you did before.
Yeah, now dial in. Give her the number to dial in. Okay, um. Thank you, everyone. Hopefully, everybody had a happy, healthy New Year. Our first item on the agenda is the Mayor's Office of Immigration Affairs. Information on the city's critical programming and resources under COVID. Mr. David Sosa. Mr. Sosa, are you here? Is Mr. Sosa there? Okay, we'll go to the next item. Presentation briefing on service provided at the Greenpoint, Williamsburg, and Jonathan Williams Clinics and Community Board One. Small Business Initiative and Individual Access to Healthcare. Ms. Anastasia Sabalini. Leslie Wright.
Hi, uh, my name is Francisco Morales. Unfortunately, Anastasia was not able to make it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I will actually be doing the presentation on behalf of her and NYC Health and Hospitals. Is it all right if I get, uh, permission to share my screen? I do have a PowerPoint. If not, it's all right.
Okay, Marie, can you give him permission to share his screen?
It seems like, uh, I haven't got permission just yet, but I can just quick, give a quick overview.
Marie, are you there? Marie, are you there?
I think Marie is on the other computer trying to walk Ms. Sable through the process, so.
Okay.
All right, well, again, it's already been mentioned, uh, Happy New Year. I hope everybody has had a productive one. Again, my name is Francisco Morales. I am here on behalf of New York City Health and Hospitals. I would like to thank the Community Board, also on behalf of Director of Community Affairs Cheryl Jones and CEO Cheryl Lewis. What we're here today to do is just to explain, uh, what our clinics offer and what they are. Uh, as far as that, the New York City Health and Hospitals Gotham Health, uh, is actually a network of federally qualified health centers that do offer patient-centered primary and preventive care services, uh, as well as family medicine. And all three of those sites do offer primary care services, which also includes family medicine, pediatrics, women's health, and specifically Jonathan Williams does offer COVID-19 testing, which is something that the Community Affairs team has been diligently working on. As well as that, a very large, uh, the very important thing that we try to push has been, uh, a program called NYC Care. Uh, beautiful. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I know.
All right, so this is just the PowerPoint, just explaining this. So this is specifically tailored for the small business outreach, which is called Gotham Health Works. And that says it strives to provide high-quality confidential and affordable healthcare service to you, your employees. Uh, again, this is about the businesses, but specifically to the general public, it does not matter, uh, your immigration status. So let's say you do have a loved one or a friend who is afraid of making an appointment with a doctor. That is not something that they need to worry about because we do offer all of these services, COVID-19 antibody testing, specifically Jonathan Williams, employment health services, primary care and preventive care, women's care, and, uh, pediatrics. Now, these are the other locations that we do have, but specifically, these are tailored to the Williamsburg, Greenpoint, and Jonathan Williams locations. One thing that we do like to use and is used nationwide is something called MyChart. It is an application that you can download on your phone and find, uh, on a website that lets you find any test results, uh, check your medications, look at any past, uh, appointments and future appointments, and if you do want to switch doctors, you can do that as well. Again, it's really easy to use and we encourage everybody to, to use it. Uh, specifically for the business owners that, uh, we have done outreach with, we've offered them distance barriers, floor decals, and window decals, and we know that it's been extremely important, uh, especially during this pandemic, to make sure that we have social distancing and make sure that our businesses do stay safe because without them, where do we get, you know, where do we get our, our favorite meals and, and all of that? For anybody that does want to be a patient with NYC Health and Hospitals, we do have a very easy form that you can, uh, that they can fill out that just needs the basics, and it's something that gets passed on to, uh, another one of my coworkers who just makes an appointment. We reach out to the patient and let them know their appointment dates, and we do give them the option to televisit by phone or by, uh, Zoom call if they, they prefer, and then they can come back in for an in-person visit. Now, this video just touches more base on NYC Care, which is the program, again, that regardless of immigration status, uh, you can get health insurance, and it can be from little to no cost. There is only one prerequisite is that this person, the patient, does need to have been in the, in the country for six months. Uh, this is just a little bit overview on what people say about MyChart. Like I said, during the COVID-19 pandemic, it's been extremely important for patients to be able to get their results, and because NYC Health and Hospitals does have its own labs now, you can get results between 24 to 72 hours, and that's made it much more convenient for anybody that doesn't need to go to work because we do understand that it's been a, that's been a very big, uh, part of trying to get back to normal. And this is the work well. This is one of the businesses that we were able to sign up, uh, with the owner and their employees. Again, we try to make it as smooth as possible getting them to be a patient, and we do touch base with them just to make sure that everything went all right with their appointments and then there is anything else that they do need. Uh, as far as the type of COVID-19 tests, I do know that the Jonathan Williams site was doing self, uh, testing, but I do not have any more information as of yet for that, but Jonathan Williams is a site that is specifically doing COVID-19 testing and as, as well as the antibody test. Uh, these are the Brooklyn, other Brooklyn sites, Midwood, Red Hook, Cumberland, and East New York, and they are doing the COVID-19 testing. These are just, uh, the other sites. We do have it in the Bronx, Manhattan, Queens, and Staten Island. And the reason we put these down is if, uh, let's say you do need to get tested and you are in the area, you could just, uh, get in line. It is walk-in. There are no appointments necessary, and we can, and you can get tested. We sign you up for MyChart if you don't have it right then and there, and then you can get your results in those 24 to 72 hours. Now, these are just some of the frequently asked questions that we have. If you do, you or somebody you know does want to sign up, as well as the businesses, there is, there, we have these two numbers that you can call, and you can email, uh, the Community Affairs team, and yes, your family can join. Like I said before, it's, this is available for anybody that does need healthcare. And it is at any of the sites available. Again, I'd like to thank the Community Board for having me once again, and if anybody does have any questions, again, I'll leave the two numbers down that are available, and I can also leave the, uh, PowerPoint as a PDF in the chat.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. If anybody has any question, if anybody has any questions, the panelists can put them in the, in the, uh, raise the hand, or if anybody else have a question, put it in the chat, and Sonia, look at the chat, or you can try to send out private question. That way, we'll get all the questions. So if anybody have any hand, any questions, raise your hands or put it in the chat.
Yes.
Absolutely.
You have a question, Bogdan? Who has a question?
Yeah, uh, Chairwoman Jerry, uh, Mr. Morales, is the center doing anything with the vaccines?
Yes, we actually are gearing up, uh, to get the vaccines out as soon as possible to the general public. We have been getting more updates from the presidents of NYC Health and Hospitals. Um, as far as right now, I'm sure everybody knows it is anybody who is, uh, frontline healthcare workers. I myself will be getting the vaccine. Um, but we are receiving day-to-day updates as far as when we will have the vaccine available. Again, any questions that you do have, uh, you can, I will also link the NYC H&amp;H website, which does have updates day-to-day where you can learn more about when exactly we'll have it.
Thank you. Joel Gross.
You hear me?
Yes.
First, I would like to say thank you. I'm the president of Jonathan Williams Plaza Houses. The testing site is so significant, all the tenants appreciating, and the entire community around is appreciating the service. They ask a question. We would like, um, once you have any idea when the vaccines is coming, to notify the Community Board One, and if you can notify me so we can notify the tenant to go out and, uh, try to get the vaccine. As well, as you know, we have a lot of construction on, um, about the mall to remove the leaks. I would try, I would like to, uh, make a priority, hold up, like, the construction point to also get, uh, like, ASAP.
Uh, yeah, of course, if you do leave your information in the chat, I can give that to my immediate supervisor, and we will definitely stay in touch. And again, uh, the next meeting that we, you do have, I can, uh, let the Community Board know when we have the vaccine available.
No, I see no heads. Sonia, is there, uh, is there any question in the chat? Sonia? Okay, there's a question. Do you know that? Hold on. Yeah, I'm trying to, yeah, there's a question. Do you know, will there be a vaccine site in Greenpoint especially, a neighborhood? Where, who's seen this vaccine yesterday?
Yes, most likely, the way it's been rolling out.
Eighty? How was that? Sorry.
Oh, no problem. Uh, yeah, specifically, uh, as far as specifics, I know there have been a number of clinics that have been making, uh, room so they can get the vaccine, uh, out. I know specifically the COVID testing sites have, some of them have pods where you do do the test, but, um, again, any, any of that information, I can actually be in touch with, uh, the medical directors and the, uh, the AEDs, the, uh, general directors, and we'll definitely ask them if they'll have an actual, uh, specific site in Greenpoint. As far, again, as far as that, uh, it's dated, day-to-day updates and just making sure that the clinics are making room for that.
Thank you. I don't see any more questions. Thank you so much, Mr. Morales.
Absolutely. Again, thank you so much for having me.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you. Is the Mayor's Office here yet on Immigration Affairs? Is there any elected, uh, officials on that would like to speak now? Is any elected officials on, Marie? Okay, we'll go on to the, uh, presentation, New York State Parks. Ms. Leslie Wright. New York State Parks, Ms. Wright.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. Thank you so much, uh, to Community Board One, uh, Chairwoman Fuller for inviting me to join this evening. Uh, if I may share my screen, I'd like to show you, um, in pictures, the coming improvements to Marsha P. Johnson State Park next door to Bushwick Inlet State, uh, excuse me, Bushwick Inlet Park.
Okay, Marie, can you give us permission to share our screen?
By way of preview, while we handle the technology, um, I'd just like to say that the improvements to the park, uh, last time I, I joined the meeting, uh, we talked about the parkhouse that is being built at the park. Uh, the parkhouse will add public restrooms to the state park. It will add a meeting space for, uh, classrooms and, uh, school visits and any other community uses, as well as a small operations and, and maintenance space. That piece of the now-site-wide improvements to Marsha P. Johnson State Park, uh, is actually underway now. The construction fence is up, and the ground has been broken just in the past few weeks. If you walk by on Kent Avenue, you can see it right there. Uh, it's, uh, the siding of it, and I have a visual once I can share my screen. The siding of it is, um, when you're right past the North Eighth, uh, entrance on Kent, right by our big flagpole, you can see the footprint of the parkhouse. It's, it's small, but we're really packing in as many things as we, as we can to, to enrich the park. Um, the larger site-wide improvements include improvements of the pathways throughout most of the park. Um, just upgrading them, making them more accessible to all modes of, of foot traffic and, um, you know, for people who have, uh, mobility challenges, making them, uh, more accessible that way as well. We are going to repair and upgrade the stormwater drainage challenges that the property has, has always had since it's been a park. I don't know if you've ever noticed, but the land is actually kind of tilted. Uh, it goes down from the street down to the, um, to the shoreline, and, and that just creates, uh, some pretty significant drainage problems when, when we have big rain events. So those are part of the site-wide improvements. Um, in addition, we are renovating the, both of the two concrete slabs in the park. Uh, they need refreshment. They've, they've been there since the property was, was made into a park. It predates the property as a park by, by many, many years. Um, and so we will make those surfaces smooth again, uh, for community use, for events, uh, for, for whatever park use, uh, is, is at hand. Um, one of the two slabs will be decorated with a permanent mural, uh, after the park's new namesake, Marsha P. Johnson, celebrating. Uh, I now can share my screen. Here we go. Um, let me find this. Thank you all very much for, for your patience. Okay, so here is just a quick snapshot of the site-wide improvements. Uh, I know the print is too small to read, uh, but it basically calls out the pathway improvements, the drainage improvements, um, the two slabs being completely renovated. We're not taking out any trees. We're adding trees to the site to add additional and very precious shade in the park. And the main thing that is significant too about this, oh, before I go there, you notice these two, um, I guess they're elliptical shapes, actually three of them. Those are, um, rain gardens and rainwater catch basins, basically bio-retention basins that will act as sponges to help soak up, uh, the storm water that collects and, uh, help the park overall have better water flow, uh, as well as move water correctly through the park. What you see, I, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but you'll notice a dashed line around much of the perimeter of the park. That dashed line represents the construction fence that's going up, uh, in the coming week, really. Um, and will, everything inside that dashed line will be an active construction site or, or staging area for the construction. Yes, it is a lot of the park. The good news is the fence is going up in the coming days, and the even better news is that the fence will be down and the projects will be complete by June of 2021. So during the coming months, um, park access, the entry will be, uh, limited to entering our dog run as, as usual um, from our next-door neighbor, Bushwick Inlet Park. Uh, and then to get into the larger northern slice of the park that, uh, that will be publicly accessible during the construction, um, you will enter through the gate, um, from inside Bushwick Inlet Park, uh, to this pathway, if you can see my cursor, uh, and be able to enjoy this lawn, uh, and down to the shoreline. Again, the good news is that this will be up for approximately six months, and when the fence comes down, uh, you'll, everybody will be able to benefit from, from the improved park. Going into some of the, uh, more finer details, um, you've seen this before, the parkhouse, uh, it's small, but as we discussed, it's, it's resilient. It's also, um, uh, has really terrific sustainability features insofar as being powered entirely by solar arrays on top. Um, it will have restrooms. We'll have two, uh, gender-neutral restrooms. We will have a green roof, uh, to help absorb more of that rainwater and, and also just look great, uh, with more green on top. The funding for this project, very generous. Um, the funding for this project, very generously provided by Assembly Member Lenthal, City Council Member Steve Levin, uh, and money from New York State Parks and our 501(c)(3) affiliate, the Natural Heritage Trust. This part of the project, we call it Phase One, uh, is underway now. It will also be completed, uh, by June 2021. Phase, and here's a closer look. You'll see that, um, the, the containers are now to be decorated in the park's, uh, coming signature colors that you've seen the mesh, the decorative mesh on the perimeter of the park, announcing the park's new name. Um, and we're picking up the, the flower motif, the colors, uh, on the parkhouse to, to tie it all together. The second part of the project, we call it Phase Two, even though, uh, time sequencing-wise, Phase One and Phase Two will essentially occur at exactly the same time. Uh, these are the site-wide improvements. Um, as you read here, it's, it's, um, uh, several touches that, uh, provide interpretation as well as very colorful and distinctive decoration to, to celebrate the park's namesake and to celebrate and interpret the, the, the movements that she represents. Uh, we are, uh, at, at last renovating the two concrete slabs to make them smooth and ready for all the events, all of the activities, whether it's just picnicking or, or, uh, you know, I've seen this past year, a lot of people playing tennis, badminton, uh, basketball, just hanging out, enjoying the, them as picnic slabs. They'll be that much more, uh, amenable, and one of them will be decorated with this oversized mural. You'll see another picture of that in a minute. Um, we're adding new furnishings to the park to both upgrade what's there and also reflect the, the, the property's industrial, um, heritage. I mentioned the stormwater management improvements, you know, that's, that's stuff that most people won't see. Um, but you'll all, everyone will, will feel it because the property will look and feel that much better because the stormwater's, uh, captured and, and controlled better. Uh, and then the, the paths that'll, um, be upgraded for everybody. The interpretive, uh, treatment has two main touches. In between the park's remnant gantry walls, uh, you all know very well, I'm sure, that the, the, the property is the former, uh, rail-to-barge terminal, and the, the wall remnants in the park house the gantries, the big structures that would lift railcars onto ferries so they could cross the river and deliver goods to Manhattan or, or, you know, sometimes vice versa. We kept the wall, uh, remnants in the park and, you know, people enjoy them, kids are climbing on them all the time. They, they kind of evoke runways, and our designers helped us come to the realization that they also help form a kind of perfect interior gallery in the park space, and, and that is what will be created here. Uh, this is the viewpoint. You're, you're deep in the park with your back to the water and you're facing Kent Avenue. Uh, toward the top of the screen, near the flagpole, you see the parkhouse, and what we've done on the surface is invert the, the grass and the cobblestones. It's, it's opposite that way now. We're refreshing the cobblestones, um, using the historic cobbles, making them smoother though, so that, uh, it's that much more, uh, accessible. Refreshing the turf, and then on the gantry walls themselves, decorating with interpretive materials that tell the story of Marsha P. Johnson's life, that tell the story of the movement that she represents, as well as much more information about the movement itself. You'll see these giant flowers. Marsha P. Johnson, uh, among other, uh, distinctive traits, you know, she, she wore flowers a lot in her hair, on her clothing, uh, so our designers picked up this motif. They're giants, as you can see from the scale of this, and we're using them really as, um, canvases to convey information, quotes. You see the, um, the, um, the, uh, code down here. Ultimately, this code, people will be able to, um, tap into it with their phones and, uh, get even more information, uh, about, uh, Marsha P. Johnson and, uh, the LGBTQ movement and history. On the northern slab, this is where the giant mural will be. Uh, as you can see, um, it picks up the motif of the gay pride flag, uh, as well as the flower motif, uh, a couple of very distinctive quotes, uh, from Marsha P. Johnson, uh, and just incorporates it into the place itself. You know, if you're up high in the sky, you'll see the whole thing. If you're down, uh, ground level, this is what it'll feel like. Inside each one of the flowers, again, there's more information. Um, and so, you know, we can see it becoming kind of a game for people and, and certainly kids or the young at heart to kind of hopscotch from one place to the other and gather information, or, or just have the tremendous color as, as, um, you know, ambiance and, and more vitality to this already incredibly, um, kind of scenic and atmospheric park. So, you know, this is it. This is all happening very quickly. Um, it's thanks to the, the governor's, uh, realization that this was, uh, uh, a, a place to invest. Um, not only invest dollars for the, the benefit of the park, but invest dollars to honor, uh, the, the namesake of the park. So I, I welcome any questions you have, and, and thank you again for inviting me to speak about the state park in the district.
Madam Chair, there's a question from.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wright.
There's a question from Katie.
Okay, sorry.
The mural and building paintings seem really bright, huge and overpowering to me, with no reflection of the historical, uh, industrial past, industrial past. I understand it is the theme, but how was it approved? Also, what is the story with, uh, BIBA? Concession, the, the BIBA owner has been around for longer than this park. The, the, okay, so will Smorgasbord, whatever, to be given a permit, and if so, why them and not BIBA?
Uh, thank you for your questions. The, um, yes, the colors are very vibrant. You know, the park is about seven acres and the, the colors, um, you know, just to make sure, uh, I was clear, the mural is on one of the two slabs. The second slab or the other slab will not be decorated, so, um, and then the, the other colorful components are the, the, um, area between the gantry walls. Otherwise, the park, um, will have improvements that are not added color so much, so, you know, our goal is to balance and to, to, to take advantage of, um, both the existing historic elements, um, the, the scenic quality of the park with that gorgeous skyline we have, um, and, and balance the two. Um, with respect to, um, the next question was about BIBA and, and the, um, the license that BIBA has had on an annual basis for the last several years. Um, you know, it's, um, it's, it's, they're, they're a great neighbor to the park. You're absolutely right. Uh, BIBA has, has been in the area much longer than the park has, and they've always been, um, a great neighbor to the park. We, we share a boundary and, and, uh, that's, that's terrific. Um, you know, it's been an annual permit, always with the understanding that, um, the business is really, um, uh, it, I guess the simple way to say it is, you know, since the neighborhood is so rich with bars and restaurants and the park is, is small and kind of surrounded by bars and restaurants, the park never really sought out a concession because, because it didn't need one, and, and we wanted to make sure that the park space was open to, to everybody as much as possible, but when, um, you know, BIBA has, has always been very eager to have a license to use a portion of one of the patios, and we've been able to accommodate that. Um, they've, they've been, um, uh, selective about the dates that they, um, open up to the public, and, um, you know, the, the governor's initiative now is to decorate the entire, the entire patio, um, and BIBA is certainly welcome to apply for a, a new permit for park use, just like anybody else.
Madam Chair.
Thank you for your question.
There's another question from Kelly Kraus. Are these renderings available online somewhere?
Yes, they are. Um, I can, um, both share them via the community board. Also, they're on the, um, you know, when the governor made his announcement about the rededication of the park, uh, the, the renderings, there's a link to many of the renderings, and actually, I think a few more, uh, on, on that website. Um, the two slides that I showed, uh, that gave the details are actually, uh, slides of the construction signs. It'll be going up in just the next handful of days as well. Just so you know.
Is there any more questions in, in chat, Sonya?
Yes, uh.
Sonya, you left?
I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of trouble. So Katie asks us again, that why does Smorgasburg, Smorgasburg, whatever, get a permit and not BIBA? Can you hear me?
Uh, this is, it's Smorgasburg. She wants to know why did Smorgasburg, Smorgasburg get a permit and not BIBA?
So Smorgasburg, exactly like BIBA, has had an annual permit. Uh, they, they, uh, do not currently have an active permit. Smorgasburg did not have any permanent installation in, in the park, right? Uh, BIBA does, and, you know, Smorgasburg is an event that pops up, uh, periodically, you know, during the warm weather months, uh, every Saturday in the warm weather month, so, um, right now, neither organization has a permit.
Hmm.
Um, Madam Chair, this is Del Tig, and Sonya, there's, there's some more, um, questions in the chat.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just struggling with getting it out. It's been a hassle.
I can read it if you're having trouble.
Yeah, I can, I can barely see, but I'm just trying to pull up because I know Tom Burrows. I guess they would speak themselves, no, Madam Chair?
Yeah, can we rec- recognize board members?
Yes, exactly. Tom is there, says he's talking.
There are people have their hands raised in the panel, panelist panel.
Yeah.
Hello, there's, uh, Tom Burrows and, and Ryan. They want some.
Are you authorizing us to shut off our, turn on our mics?
No, I'm asking the Madam Chair.
Can people just start asking their questions so we can move forward? I mean, we're sitting in silence now. So who's the next question on, in the group chat? I think the next question comes from Tom. Tom, can you ask your question and then just go down like that? Why are we sitting here without speaking?
Tom, go ahead, ask your question.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Wright, um, why is Smorgasburg have that whole dedicated slab, which is still marked out as a dedicated slab to the south of the painted slab? And, um, they come out every Saturday for the most prime-time usage of the park, from the spring to the fall. And you said you didn't seek a vendor, yet you have hundreds of vendors on that slab of concrete every Saturday during the spring and the fall. We've never heard how they get to apply for that permit when they show up, um, and yet they come to us asking for a liquor license. Why is it necessary for Smorgasburg to be in that state park, and how does the community get any input into the fact that they're there?
Thank you for the question. The image that you're seeing, uh, that I showed, let me go back to it. This image here. This, so just so everyone understands, this, uh, underlying, this is an underlying photograph from the past. I'm not sure which year, quite honestly, onto which we've added the rendering of the, um, mural, so everyone understands that. Um, as I think you all know, uh, for a variety of reasons, COVID, uh, in particular, there was no food fair of any sort, not Taste of Williamsburg, uh, Smorgasburg, there was no kite fair, kite festival, rather, in 2020, uh, in the park. Um, we, uh, do not currently have any permits, uh, with Smorgasburg for a food fair in 2021. Uh, and as mentioned, uh, BIBA's permit expired in, at the end of March 2020. So, um, we are entertaining the notion, uh, depending on, on COVID, of issuing an RFP for, uh, a food fair. Again, it would only happen, uh, safely, uh, depending on, on what the status of the coronavirus is for P21. Uh, that will be a public RFP, and anyone is welcome to. But again, e- even with applications, it, it, the, no food fair, no event will happen in this park or any other state park, uh, that is outside the current guidelines, health precautions for COVID.
When you write that RFP, can you speak to the community board's, um, parks committee and the S L A committee so that the rules we have and the rest of, will not apply to that park?
Well, um, no, it'll be a public RFP, but remember, this is state land, so, um, it's different jurisdiction. All of those rules. I, I do believe, uh, however, having said that, that, you know, there's, there's really tremendous compatibility and, and cooperation as between the state and city, uh, parks generally in New York City.
Is that it, Tom? Tom, you finished?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Santa, I saw your hand.
Hi, good evening. Um, yeah, I don't know if I have a question, but probably have a lot of, of criticism. I, I'm kind of astonished. I'm shocked that, yeah, probably some question will come. I mean, how much did it cost, uh, this mural? That, these, these murals probably, uh, it's, it's a message you can only be see from a, from an airplane. And, and while we are here in a overcrowded Williamsburg and we are desperately needed for parks and open space and nature and grass, and, and for these murals. And why we haven't created more natural space that was so needed, you know, I mean, and, and honestly, and I have understanding of, uh, architecture, a place fixing should be, it's an overreaction. You know, you can't even read anything. There is no message that can be read in person. Once you're on site, you're only stimulated by a million calories. I understand that we want to celebrate the person, but I, I don't think such a huge overwhelming intervention was necessary. I feel insulted as a citizen, you know. Yeah, I'm not against, uh, uh, celebrating anybody that has had a role in society and whatever, but I, I, I'm astonished, especially then during COVID, we want to close an entire park and, and, and I keep hearing that it's reassuring. The good news is that in June, the project says by the summer, we're going to have an open park. We need open space now. We can't afford to close any open space in our community today, or we should access open space already. That's all I have to say, and there's far more, hopefully, other fellow member, because these deserve only critics, from my point of view. No, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Alkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I just want to go back to the issue with BIBA and the, you know, as you stated in the presentation, you mentioned how there's not a need to have concessions there, and then in the next response to Tom, you said that you're going to be putting out an RFP for concessions in the spot where. you said that you're going to be putting out an RFP for concessions in the spot where Smorgasburg is. And so I just don't understand how a tenant who's been there for so long and who's been an active member of the community is being pushed out of this ostensibly for space for a large mural. And why would the minimal space that they have behind their building can't be factored into the, to the painting on, on the slab of concrete? It's not like the entire mural is dependent upon that small space that Beba has. So I, I know Mark, he came and spoke to the Parks Committee and I think he's, you know, planning to speak tonight as well. And it just seems, you know, there's, it's a real, it's just not great to be, you know, basically forcing out a longtime tenant and community member and sacrificing their open space, which is so valuable for restaurants right now, just for a few more feet of, on already very large mural. So I just feel like the state needs to, to answer to that and rectify the situation. Is there any way to, to change the scope of the mural that it doesn't include that small section behind the building?
Thank you for your question and comment. We've, we've, we've spent a good amount of time talking with, with Mark and his team on this and the vision and that the power of the mural and the, the power of the vision, the whole slab is, is needed. And, you know, I just want to clarify one thing. We're by no means dictating whether or not Beba do, do business, right? We, we only have jurisdiction over the state park land and what, what they do business-wise inside the building i- is, is not in the State Park Department jurisdiction. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody had that clear too.
Thank you. Is there any other questions?
Yes, Del Tig, I have my hand up too. And Steve Chesler has his hand up.
Ryan also, Ryan.
Okay, Ryan too.
I don't see any hands up. That's why I can't call your name. I'm looking at the list.
Okay.
She shared in the chat, Ryan.
Dale, go ahead.
Okay, just let me tell you that I agree with everything everyone has said so far. And I understand that this is a state park and state land, but it's not some little piece of a big state forest. I mean, this is, this is a very significant part of our community. It has a significant effect on our community. And I don't understand how it is that this community board in this community is not an integral part of make, of the decision-making. So what if it's state-owned? This is, has a huge effect. And we've been complaining about the fact for a long time now, about the fact that every week, a huge percentage of this park is taken up by Smorgasburg or whatever. And, and the rest of the community, and these are on weekends, when the community really needs this park. And the other thing I want to say is we loved the fact that this was our industrial park. It was a park that, that was that, not an industrial park, but that it, it maintained a really, really good sense of the industrial part of this community. And there are many people in this community who worked so hard to maintain that characteristic and to make it a park anyway. And this to me flies in the face of, of all of that and without any community input. And, you know, the one, the one vendor that this community has come to, to defend because he was so helpful while, when we didn't have any, any space was the owner of Beba. And, you know, I, I just don't understand how this is happening and I don't think it's right. And I think the state has a real nerve ignoring the community board. No one, none of the city agencies would do that. And to come and say to us, well, this is state property. This is a piece of very significant property in our community. That's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi, this is Steve Chesler. And I just, I feel the need to pile on. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, how, yeah, this, I mean, for previous, for the designs of the, you know, the parkhouse, the designs were brought to the community board and input was, you know, was, was gathered. And, you know, I don't know if it, in the end influenced the design, but at least offered that, that consideration. I just feel like by gubernatorial edict, we're having this park design shoved down our throat. And as Santay said, I told all four commemorating and educating and celebrating Martha P. Johnson. But I feel like this is not the way to do it. I feel like this totally violates the spirit of the, you know, accidental playground, the industrial fabric and the naturalism of this park. And it's just, it's, you know, blinding on the eyes. And so I, I'm just really resentful that it didn't, the community wasn't consulted through the community board. And, and also, yeah, I just, you know, Beba again has been part of the fabric of the park. It's a beautiful historic building. They've been a true partner. And it seems pure common sense that somehow the design of this mural could be integrated with the space that he's been utilizing. So, so really, it's very frustrating that design is happening in the way that it's happening.
Ryan, it's seven o'clock also. We have to wrap this up to Brian.
De'elis, there were, there were two people who signed up from the public on this item.
Okay. Well, I know Ryan been trying to speak for a while. Ryan, are you still there?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, can you be as brief as possible?
Of course. I have one question. Are we really getting one day notice in COVID? As the city is possibly facing more lockdowns, that our park is going to be closed for six months? Is that really, like, we get one day notice that the park is closing, that the, is that like the gate, the fences are going? I mean, I, I like literally can't believe that as we're entering into an austerity budget, essentially they're pushing this through to get it done fast. So the money can be spent on this and not, I don't know, maybe housing, food, real things. Like in essence, again, supposedly to honor Martha P. Johnson, who I consider to be a hero. But this is being forced through so fast at the detriment of the people that Martha P. Johnson fought for. And I just have to say that also our park being closed is like during COVID is, is absurd. And it just proves that they're trying to push this through because they need to get it done. I don't know if it's so Governor Cuomo can come have a big event and pat himself on the back. But this community fought for this and none of the people here that have designed it fought for it. And I mean, I'm, I'm going to let Mark speak for himself. People know that I've worked with Mark for years. So I'm not going to even really touch on the unfairness of the Beba situation. But I just don't understand how we're getting one day notice of a park closure for six months. It's during COVID, I mean, in a normal year, that would be insanity. During COVID, it's criminal and unconscionable.
Thank you, Ryan. Marie, would you call the two speakers that want to speak?
Okay, Mark? Mark, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, do you want, you have two, you want to speak?
Yes, please, yes. Good evening. Happy New Year. My name is Mark Higavitski. I'm the owner of buildings surrendered by the park. I run the Beba event space. My concession license with New York State Park was created because they want to host the events, but did not have the infrastructure. They needed to use my building for bathrooms, for Wi-Fi coverage, for security and as a backstage. At least was their idea as a transition away from concert to smaller scale community events like movie night. I was not, it was not feasible to do the events weekly without the lease due to insurance and health laws. For years, I offered to build restrooms for the park in exchange for Eastman to building, to build a glass elevator. They wouldn't sit down to have a meeting with me to discuss. I have constantly been dismissed as a nuisance, watching as Smorgasburg got permission to do things like a shipping container bar. My concessions stand went from a simple $50,000 project ending up costing over $200,000 after engineering and landscaping demands by the state. With our rent and 5% gross profit payment, we haven't even broke even on the building cost yet. Now that the current director has secured funding for her restrooms and the governor has decided our park is cool, I am being threatened of my backyard space for no good reason. I have been told Beba doesn't fit the my vision for the park. I ask, why does this vision dismiss the community who helped build it? I have been on that corner for 45 years, back when the same government was actually harassing Martha Johnson. My soon-to-be-born granddaughter will spend her first days on that corner, hopefully still running the family's business here in 45 years, when all those government officials with a vision will have forgotten all about this park. Please stand in support of an immigrant-owned small business that is struggling to survive gentrification and COVID as the community to write a letter to Governor Cuomo in New York State Parks, including our elected from Schumer to Levin, asking why small published businesses are being pushed out of the Martha P. Johnson for no good reason. Thank you. Thank you, community, for having me. Thanks.
You're welcome. Calling next speaker, Marie.
Yes, Jimmy Carbone. Jimmy, are you here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm Jimmy Carbone. I'm a New York City restaurant owner and event producer. Going back to 2012, I've been friends with Mark and his family. And I've hosted many events at, at their location. Some of them, we used the park as well in the early days. But I just want to give credit to Mark for hosting, letting me host the events there. We featured for Cider Week New York in terms of New York State, you know, craft producers, Cider Week New York, the last few years, we featured the premiere cider week event at Beba. We've hosted many other events with New York State producers of craft beer and cider and farm products. We think it's an integral part of the community and that outdoor space is an important part of it. And I would also suggest that why not allow Mark to modify the outdoor space? Because he's already using it as a community space. People come in, use the bathroom. If, if anyone's going to be in the Martha P. Johnson space, they're obviously going to want to use the concession for drinks and, and some food possibly and, and bathrooms at the least. And it could also be a place for, for regular gatherings. Mark's always opened his door, not just to me, but to so many other organizations in, in the community. You would think that wouldn't, wouldn't the governor or someone else want to have a nice gathering of, of people he's honoring at the Beba concession as well? I think that you're looking at an opportunity to create a better park with, with a better Beba concession. And all you guys have to do is realize that it's, it's not interfering with the, with the design, that it should be incorporated and that Mark's building is the perfect, the community partner to be that. And thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. I see that there's a lot of discussion on this. Would everyone like for, like for us to do the Lenthall and then come back to this?
No, no.
Yes, yes.
Does there, does anybody else have any questions on it?
There's other questions in the chat. Madam Chair?
Yeah, well, okay, what we gonna do lastly, if you don't mind, can we come back to you after we do this?
Certainly, sure.
Okay, we'll come back to this. Thank you. Could you, is Lenthall here?
Yes.
Is Lenthall here? Yes. Okay. Hi, Joe, how you doing? Hello?
He's, he's logging back on.
Okay.
I see him.
I don't see him.
He's muted. Just unmuted.
Does he have a picture?
Yep.
Well, you got it. I don't.
I don't have it either.
How do you have it? Unfair.
I don't have it.
You have the floor.
He's there, just scroll.
He's there. Change your layout to grid layout.
I'm lucky I could open it up. You wanted to change it to grid.
Yeah, we saw, we see.
I see his little name there.
I don't see nothing.
Joseph, you're unmuted.
Hi, Joe. Hi.
Hey, Joe.
Must know how to use.
Zoom.
Hi, Joe, how you doing?
Happy New Year.
I can't even hear him.
But we see him.
We don't. Some of us.
I don't.
How are you seeing him?
I see him.
I can't hear him.
I don't see him.
Oh, community.
You have to do the layout. You have to change the layout.
You're very cute, Bosina.
We all love you, Joe. We all love you here from CB.
Well, we gotta say something more substantive than that.
No, we appreciate everything that he did for the community board and for, for the community in, in general.
Is he getting on or what's happening?
They said you have to change your layout to see him.
I need, I need to hear him so I can not give, so I can do this certificate.
Marie, you have to click participants.
I guess we can keep talking while you're doing it. I think Bosina is right. We can keep talking.
Yes.
Okay, well, the fair body want to keep giving Joe accolades. I don't know if he can hear him.
Now his microphone is muted. Was on, it was on, now it's unmuted.
Joe, can you hear?
He's speaking.
I know you don't have to listen to us anymore.
I see his mouth moving, but I don't hear anything.
Yeah.
Is he unmuted from your end, Marie?
Yes, he is. But I think they're trying to work on his, his end to make it work.
Okay.
He's unmuted. I think they're trying to get it to work.
If we can write also in the side things, things that we'd like to say, unless we send it all in the citation. I see Joe Lenthall, it's black.
I don't think it's the volume.
So can you speak to us? On my side, I see it's unmuted.
He's on now.
I saw him for, I saw your head.
I see him now.
All right, some of us see him.
I heard him. Can you hear me now? I hear him.
Hi, Joe.
Yes.
It's gonna be his new life. We're gonna cite him in different places. People say, I saw him there. No, I saw him there.
Let him speak, please.
Will y'all let, will y'all let me speak?
Yes, I've got to say, it's De'elis that, Joe.
Madam Chair, it's your, the floor is yours, even though I don't have authority to give it to you.
Thank, thank you, Joe. Thank you so much. And I wish you a happy, healthy, prosperous New Year. And I would like to thank you for all the years that you've given your energy to this district and how you made us a better place to live. And you're gonna be, you're gonna be a hard act to follow. And I've known you for many years and I know all the hard work that you've done. So on behalf of the community board and myself, I'd like to give you the Certificate of Excellence. And it reads Brooklyn Community Board Number One, Certificate of Excellence. This certificate of excellence is awarded to Honorable Joseph R. Lenthall, a Semleman 50th A.D. in recognition of outstanding performances, the lifetime achievements given at the first meeting of Brooklyn Community Board One, this 12th day of January, the year 2021. De'elis Fuller Chair, Simon Weiser, First Vice Chair. Thank you so much, Joe, for all the work that you've done.
Yay.
Nine, the floor is yours, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Can you see it?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Show it to everybody, and if I may, if I'm able to be heard now, I only have a few words to say, and most of them are encapsulated, encapsulated, and thank you for this wonderful board, the Alice Fuller, Jerry Esposito, and especially all the board members who give of their time and effort to this community unselfishly, all the time, in order to make it a better place to live. And I can't tell you how happy I have been to be a part of your community, as well as our community in Greenpoint and Williamsburg, in an effort to make it a better place to live. I'm sorry? In any event, thank you very much for the certificate. I really appreciate it. I appreciate you. Don't forget, I'm still gonna be around, no matter what. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Joe. Now, now everybody can offer accolades, the stories.
I'd like to thank John Lenthal, we have all night residents. He was like a grandfather to all residents in our district, Jonathan Wilk Plaza, and Tower, New York Development, Houses. Everybody, the seniors, middle-aged, it's kind of like a grandfather. Everybody always will first to help the resident. With his boy Eric. Help what we need from the mental function. Especially when we have the fact that rap program, we were always fighting, writing, and making it make movies.
Breaking up, I can't.
We can't hear you, Joe. We can't hear you.
I would like to propose we should name a street after Assemblyman Joe Lenthal. And I think everybody should take a month and think what is the best street to name after him, and he deserved it. Forty-eight years of service. We should call a popular street on his name.
I second your position.
Idea. Excellent.
Great idea. Does anybody else want to offer accolades?
Sure, I would. Yeah, we're talking about parks tonight, and Joe Lenthal is so instrumental in saving and creating new open space in our neighborhood, including East River State Park. That wouldn't have been, we were behind discussion today, it wasn't for him. And then with saving the city storage site in Bushwick and La Park. Now I have a full twenty-seven acre park that's slowly being realized, but it wasn't for, you know, Joe and Steve Levin bringing the city and the property owner together. It'd be a big hole in that park. So, and it's just been awesome working with you, Joe, on an issue and other issues with Emily and Eric and your whole staff. You're just awesome. So, thank you. Thank you for your amazing service.
Thank you, Steve.
I'd like to say something, Delte. So, on behalf of myself and also on behalf of the People's Firehouse. Someone is, someone is mute themselves.
Yo Lando.
Anyway, Joe, on behalf of the people's firehouse and on behalf of myself, awesome is the word, really. You've been so special. You know, we could go on for hours about all the things you've done for this community. You've just always been there. Nothing was too big or small a request, and you've always been there. So, I just refuse to see this as, well, we're saying so long, or, you know, you're retiring, because we still need you, and you can still be such an important and active part of this community. And I don't think there's a nonprofit who wouldn't welcome you on their board. And you just, you just need to stay involved, please, because you're just such an amazing source of wonderful information, and you are just such an amazing tribute to how a politician really, really can be of great service and can give great love to his or her constituents. So, thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Rabbi Niederman?
I just want to say, I still don't believe it that you are not serving as the Assemblyman. You, let me just say, I think we'll just nominate you as Ambassador-at-Large to continue your wonderful work that you have done for so many years. There isn't a segment of the community, there isn't ethnic or minorities or any part of the community that did not benefit of your heart and your hard work. We thank you for what you have done, and as I say, we beg you to stay with us, to stay with not only naming a park, not only naming a street, which I second, but be active with us. And I wish you success and happiness for many, many years to continue.
Thank you, Rabbi. Anybody else want to offer accolades?
I want to speak.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, well, I think we've all just watched a horrendous situation happening in Washington. And I have, and I'm tying that to the kind of community you have helped build with the rest of us, a place where all diverse groups can feel that they're working together. When I look at you, you were from the Italian to the Polish, to the African-American, to the Hispanic, to women. You stood up for all the diversity that's been in our community and helped bring people together. When we've seen now for the last four years and for the last week, how people can divide people and destroy democratic practice, I have even bigger appreciation. I've had appreciation a long time about your work. It's building democratic practice and building a way that we all that are sitting on this board have had different relationships with you, but we were included. We felt we had something to say. Not like the Steve Park thing we just went through. You helped restore and strengthen democracy here, so you are a part of being an ongoing ambassador. I think Rabbi Niederman has it right, and you need more than a salute. But on behalf of the National Congress of Neighborhood Women and GREC and Swing, we want to thank you for all your.
Thank you, Jan. Is there anybody else that want to offer accolades?
I want to say something, Dallas.
Do you hear me, Joe?
On behalf of the.
Somebody else is speaking.
And community, Joe, I would like to thank you for your leadership, for being the best politician and leader in our lifetime. I mean, since I'm here, I have not seen anybody so dedicated, so strong, and so powerful for the community as you. And not only that, you became a friend. We celebrated. You were there when we needed a help. And that, this is unbelievable. You don't see that in politicians. The politicians always think about themselves and reelection. You always thought about the community. And on the bottom of my heart, I would like to thank you for all those years in service. And you will never be forgotten, that you're gonna be missed, but if you're gonna be in the neighborhood, we always have you part of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Bosina. I'll always be there.
Thank you. Tish? Tish?
I'm on. I see you, Joe. I want to thank you for all that you have done for the concerned citizens, the Withers Street Mary Block Association, and the GREC plan for positive housing and health facilities. You were right on board there with Mike Watchford, all of the group there. And I just want to say, you're gonna really be missed. I worked for you over thirty-two years, and I know the effort that you had consumed with the community, people coming into the office with whatever problem they had. It was always helpful. Coming to the Assemblyman Lenthal's office, right there in our community, everyone that did go to for help was always there. So, I really want to bring up, thank you. I worked with you, and I know in that office, everyone that came, everyone. And the government reports for so many years, and you have been an assemblyman. And I wish you all, I know that you do.
Time election, very nicely done.
The fact that you're here, the world was at the twenty-four, the twenty-six, and everyone that came, twenty-six, twenty-four. We all were, you can help, and we all have to, just because of you. We want to meet you, but we wish you well.
Thank you, Tish.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to give accolades? If anybody is not speaking, please mute your mic.
It's Toby Maslow.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Tommy.
Madam Chair, Assemblyman Lenthal, thank you, and congratulations on a wonderful career. I met you back in nineteen eighty-seven at MS-126 as a seventh freighter, as a participant of the music program. You helped us with instruments. You helped us get to Albany on our bus trips. And twenty-four-year career as an educator. On behalf of all the teachers and staff and the children of District Fourteen, thank you for helping our students and our schools. And I know I wouldn't be where I'm at today without the support of individuals like yourself, Joe. I love you, and I wish you the very best on your next phase of your life. God bless you.
Madam Chair, this is Toby Maslow. Can I speak?
Yes.
Well, I wanted to say also, you know, this community board, this community, and our leader, you know, Mr. Joseph Lenthal, really taught all of us what it means to be cohesive, what it means to support each other. We all come from very different backgrounds, different religions, different worlds, and I think the testament to what you created here, Joe, and the unity that we've seen in this very diverse community because of the example you set for all of us, allowed us to be in this moment. So much collaboration and so much love between the groups. We're gonna, you've been a visionary. We hope to keep seeing you around the neighborhood, and, you know, it's been an honor and a privilege to be a member of your community and to call you a friend.
Thank you, Toby.
Thank you, Toby. Is there anybody else?
Yeah, Madam Chair, it's bizarre to the balance. Can I say a few words?
Yes.
Yes, Joe, as a president of Pulaski Business and your neighbor, I just want to thank you for everything you did for the Polish community, all the communities in our neighborhood. I mean, I'm lucky enough to see you every day. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you did for me, for everyone, especially for Pulaski Business Association and for all of us. Thank you so much, Joe.
Thank you, Arthur.
Madam Chair, it's Karen. Any others if I could say something, please?
Yes.
Joe, I just wanted to thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that you have done for this community, whether it's housing, whether it's environmental, economic development. You have been there for everyone. You've always had an open door. If anyone had an issue or a problem, you welcomed us. You tried your best, no matter what, to serve us. And I just want to say thank you, and it's your fault that I'm actually on the community board. Because when I met you, officially met you, I remember when you used to campaign down my block on Diamond Street in the car with the horns. But officially, when I met you, was at an ExxonMobil meeting. I was eighteen years old. It was the first time that I got up and publicly spoke about the concerns about growing vegetables in my own backyard. And you came up to me and you said, "Don't worry, we're gonna hold them accountable." And we did as a community. And you said, "Get involved. We need more younger people in our community to get involved." And it was because of you that I stuck with it, and I continue to fight on this community board and for the community of Greenpoint, Williamsburg, and CB One. So I just wanted to thank you from the bottom of my heart. I love you. And I know you're gonna still be involved in the community, and you're not going nowhere, because we're not gonna let you. Thank you.
I love you, Tish.
Madam Chair, can I say a couple of words to Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Joe, one of the biggest pleasures I had was meeting you in the park with your lovely wife. As I always said, you can judge a person by the friends they keep. And your wife and you are such wonderful people. I want to thank you for creating a community of such good neighbors. And when we moved into this neighborhood in two thousand and five, I really felt this was the neighborhood that was meant to have been born here, North Brooklyn, and you're responsible for that. So from the bottom of my heart, and your legacy will continue in that for just us, but with our children and our grandchildren. Thank you so much for you and your wife's service to our community. Thank you.
Bella?
Is there anybody else?
Thank you, William.
Yes, Madam Chair, Frank Carbone here.
Yes, Frank.
Yes, hey, Joe. I'm just gonna say this. I've known you for over forty years. Not that I'm that old, but I remember running when I was twelve years old with all my friends on Russell Street every time it snowed to come and try to shovel your snow first, shovel your sidewalk first. And it was a pretty intense job, but you were always a great tipper, so we loved it. We always battled over who was gonna get to shovel. We rotated, whether you realized it or not. But, Joe, you know, I'm gonna say it very simply. You've always been my inspiration and a role model to me in everything that I've done, not only at St. Stan's, certainly at the Greenpoint Y. Again, you've been a true inspiration to me, and I've always tried to follow your lead. You've always been like a father figure to me. So, again, I wish you all the best. I know I'm gonna see you around a lot, and I'll just say this. You are the man, Joe. That's it. Love you.
Love you, Frank. Thank you.
And Joe, Bella, would you want to say something? Try to speak. Because this is the first, Joe, you helped us with the women's swim. Bella Sable was appointed to the board and started today. That is what you helped us with, so she's on the call. I don't know if she can get through.
Congratulations, Bella. Being on the board, that's wonderful. The first aesthetic woman on the board, right?
Right, that's right.
Yeah, that's great. That's great.
We all change.
Anybody else?
No.
Sorry, I just wanted to just say thank you to Emily and Eric and Joe's staff. Amazing, amazing, hardworking staff for all the years of your service, and we appreciate you too.
That's the peak to that list.
Thank you. Thank you. I have the best staff in the United States of America, and they're still with me. They don't want to leave me.
Of course not. Of course not. Anybody else?
Yep. Madam Chair, Jerry Esposito?
Yes.
Just to mention a few, when the state came to us and wanted to tear down the viaduct for the BQE, Joe got us money to hire and put up a temporary viaduct alongside the expressway so that the traffic didn't reel through our community. Klaszkasco Bridge replacement, Joe was there to make sure it was done seamlessly. Four years, on target, on contract. When the city came to us and wanted to actually close the Williamsburg Bridge, I don't know how many people remember that, Joe was there, standing with us side by side. The mobile oil spill was already mentioned, the two thousand and five rezoning. And lest we forget, the beating up of Mayor Bloomberg to get thirty-eight million dollars to restore the Karen Park pool. Joe was forefront on all these projects and many, many more that I'm probably leaving out. But on behalf. on all these projects and many, many more that I'm probably leaving out. But on behalf of myself and my staff, Joe, sincerely thank you. And I thank you, your staff, and let's not forget Kathy Peacock in Albany, always there when you need her. And Joe, thank you. God bless. Long life.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You have anything else to say, Joe?
Yes, I do. You guys have been wonderful tonight. I appreciate this award, and as I said earlier, I'm going to be around. So don't think I'm not going to speak out on all of the issues of the day like I've always done and like I'll continue to do. Thank you for tonight. I love you all.
Thank you so much, Joe. Well, thank you and your staff for all the help that you've done, and they were always there for Community Board One. And I just wish you Godspeed and go look forward to you getting in some good trouble in the neighborhood. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Okay, are we going to go back to the parks presentation? Please speak on it. I had my hand up, I know. Are you still here? Did I ask something else to say, Jan? I had wanted to speak on the parks. Is Ms. Wright still here?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Jan had a question or something? Well, I'm concerned, and maybe it'll seem again off the line, but I remember meeting with you and Ms. Wright, and women were talking about a plan for that park a few weeks before this one was announced. And I'm quite concerned with what other people are saying tonight is that the lack of democratic practice and participation with the community on this park, not only who it's honoring, which or the way it's designed and how it's being used. And in light of what's happening again in our country, when we look at our country being part of parks, we have to really be stepping up to the plate of carrying out democracy at the local level. If we don't take seriously the democratic practice, we're going to keep on splitting our country apart. So I want to put that in. So I'm hoping that we can have more time to talk about making consideration the points our members have brought up tonight.
Thank you.
Dana, you have a question?
I just would like to clarify because I feel like this was glossed over when it was asked, is it not possible to change the mural so that Beba could have this space? You said, oh, we looked into it, but it's not possible. Can you explain more of that? Like, what exactly did you look into and why exactly is it not possible? Because if, I mean, it goes back to the democratic process. I'm just, you know, I deal a lot with different people who do renderings of public space. What is the restrictions that you're seeing that would not allow for Beba to have access to that space as it has?
So I think that's a little bit of confusion, and maybe I misspoke, so I apologize for that. You know, the mural will cover the entire slab. We're restoring both slabs so that they're smooth. You know, they're old, and they've got a lot of cracks, and they've been patched in various places at various times. So, you know, they need to be refurbished, and that's number one. Both slabs, the entirety of both slabs need to be refurbished. So that's what we're doing. And the one slab will be decorated with a mural, and the design intent is that the entire slab be decorated with a mural. Beba, like anybody else in the community, can apply for a park use permit to use parts of the park, including parts of that patio. So just know that that is a wide open possibility for them or anyone else in the community.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There was a question from Katie, and she's asking, can this be bought before the Parks Committee? Can the CB vote on this all and write to the governor and get backing from their local elected officials?
Could you read the question again?
Yes. Can this be bought before the Parks Committee? Can the CB vote, can the City Community Board vote on this all and write to the governor and get backing from the local elected officials? Is that possible, she's asking?
Does this require Community Board vote? I don't think so, does it, Ms. Wright?
It does not.
Would you like to come to the committee and further discuss this with the community?
I'm always happy to attend the meeting, sure.
Okay. Well, we'd like you to come back, come to the Parks Committee, and you'll probably need to go to SLA, I'm not sure. Tom had mentioned something about that. So if you can bring this issue to the Parks Department Committee and further give it some discussion with the community.
I'm happy to meet, anytime.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions?
There's also been a question about the cost of the mural, the entire project. What is the cost of this mural and the entire project?
The entire project comes in, including the parkhouse, comes in at $14 million. Again, it's extensive site-wide drainage, infrastructure work. It's replacing both of the slabs. It's building the parkhouse with its amenities. It's rather extensive pathway work site-wide, as well as all of the decorative elements, decorative and interpretive elements and signage throughout the park.
Okay, thank you. Is that... Somebody had a question? Okay, if there's no more questions, thank you, Ms. Wright. We would like to have a joint meeting with SLA and the Parks Department with you, and those two committees will get together and come up with a date and send out a note. Yes?
Thank you. May I?
Wait, hold on. There's also another question. Did they have communities coping to ask what the community was interested in?
You know, we've had extensive meetings with focus groups from the LGBTQ plus community and other meetings specifically with respect to the parkhouse going back a couple of years. As sadly, the first couple of times we bid that, we came up with bids that were way too expensive.
Madam Chair, could I just clarify one thing?
Yes, yes.
With respect to the suggestion that the state appear before the city, SLA, I'm not quite sure what that connection is. I'm happy to understand that, but the state is not applying for any liquor license. Instead, it would be anyone who has a park use permit or other concession agreement that would have to, my understanding, get the license from the SLA rather than the state itself. So I'm not really in a position to speak to that.
I have one additional question. This is Trina. Is it possible for the construction to be staged in such a way that part of the park can remain open? Do you have to close down the whole park?
So the northern part of the park will be open, and because the park is small and because, you know, we decided to take the approach of to do it as quickly as possible, and because the drainage work in particular and the pathway work, that touches on most of the park. So to get to an economy of scale and also provide staging area for the contractors with their necessary equipment and vehicles and stuff, this seemed to be the most efficient way. But again, the dog run will be completely open and accessible, as it always is, and the northern lawn portion of the park and the waterfront will be open and available. You just have to enter through the city park next door.
Is there any other questions? Okay, there being none. Thank you so much, Ms. Wright, and have a good one.
My pleasure. Thank you so much for having me again. I appreciate the time.
You're quite welcome. Assemblywoman Marissa Davil is here. She'd like to speak.
And so for all that he has done all of these decades, we're going to be missing him dearly in Albany, to say the least. But I wanted to say Happy New Year to everyone, all the board members. I wanted to also talk a little bit about what we are going to be focusing on and will ensure this year. We do have the House, thank you, Jesus, or whatever higher power is up there. But BQ Green is one of the biggest projects that we would like to tackle this year in Williamsburg. We have a lot of work to do together, and I just wanted to get on and wish everybody a Happy New Year. Sorry to all of those that lost family members under this pandemic. We had a lot of problems with food insecurity. We were out there doing what we needed to do and ensuring that people had food during this pandemic. And we still have a lot of uncertainties that we're dealing with at this point. But we're getting a little bit better, a little bit at a time, and I just wanted to get on and just say thank you to all of you for your service. Anything that you may need from me, my office is not physically open, but you can definitely call my staff this work. And most of you, I think, most of my friends have phone number.
Excuse me, Marissa. Rabbi, would you please mute yourself? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Marissa.
No, I just wanted to thank all of you and wish everyone a Happy New Year and prosperous one and a better one and a healthy one. And, you know, if anyone has any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them. But thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Assemblywoman. Does anyone have any questions for the Assemblywoman? Okay, being no questions, I'd like to thank you, Marissa. I'd like to wish you a happy, healthy New Year. Stay safe, stay healthy. Thank you.
Happy New Year, Assemblywoman. Love you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is, where will we? Okay, liquor license. Is there any comments for the liquor license? Tom, is there anything for liquor license?
Well, I just want to remind everybody to read the list, note the places that are nearby. If there's any issues or things that have happened, let me know. It looks like a couple of them on that first list are trying to upgrade themselves from wine and beer to full liquor. And there's 17, like I said, there's 17 new ones and the renewals. You know, anything about any of the renewals are a problem, let me know. We're trying to go to our new system to get people to come online and talk to us about their application. So if anybody has anything to say about any of them, please get them to us, okay?
Thank you, Tom. That concludes our public session. Now we'll go into our board meeting. Can we have a moment of silence, please, and let's dedicate our moment of silence to peace? Thank you so much. Jerica DeCorto, as before, if you're not speaking, please mute your mics.
Gina Argento. Gina Argento. Bogdan Bakarowski.
Present.
Lisa Biamonte.
Present.
Gina Barrows.
Present. There was an outage, a spectrum outage before, so just to know.
Tiam Brooks.
Present.
Eric Presides.
Here.
Tom Burrows.
Present.
Iris Cabrera.
Present.
Phil Capinagro.
Here.
Frank Carbone.
Here.
Stephen Chesler.
Here.
Michael Chiracella. Michael Chiracella. Cenciata. Teresa Cenciata. No answer. Giovanni D'Amato.
Here.
Who was that? Tish? Hello?
Present.
And I'm here too, Giovanni D'Amato.
I didn't get to you yet, but thank you. I don't know who that was.
Present. Present.
Michael Chiracella. No answer. Nope. Fish? Teresa Cenciata. Thank you. Giovanni D'Amato.
Here.
Thank you. Erin Drinkwater.
Here.
Thank you. Arthur Dibinowski. Arthur Dibinowski.
Here.
Thank you. T. Willis Elkins.
Here.
Thank you. Julia Amanda Foster.
Here, here.
Thank you. Chairperson Fuller.
Here.
Joel Goldstein.
Here.
Thank you. Joel Gross. Thank you. Sonia Iglesias.
Here.
Thank you. Moisha Indig. Moisha Indig. Moisha Indig. No answer. Bosina Kaminsky.
Present.
Thank you. Avram Katz. Avram Katz. Katz. No answer. William Clagsbald.
Here.
Thank you. Ryan Coonan.
Here.
Thank you. Yo Landau. Yo Landau.
Here.
Really answer.
Here.
Thank you. Abraham Libavitz.
Present.
Thank you. Yo Lo.
Here.
Thank you. Trina McKeva.
Is she here?
I'm in it. I'm in it.
Here.
Kiva, thank you. Sante Macheli.
Here.
Thank you. Toby Moskowitz. Thank you. Martin Needleman.
Okay, I'm in it. To call on the office, 3-3.
Martin Needleman. Martin Needleman.
He's here, Jerry. I see him trying to talk.
Marty, you have to unmute yourself. Marty Needleman.
He's trying. He's, he's, he's trying to.
I see you. Rabbi Needleman.
Here.
Thank you, Rabbi. Karen Yévez.
Here.
Thank you. Mary Odomerak.
I'm here.
Thank you. Janice Peterson.
I'm here.
Thank you. Dana Racklin.
Present.
Thank you. Bella Sable. Bella Sable. Bella Sable. No answer. Isaac Soffer.
She says she was here, Joe.
Yeah. Okay. Isaac Soffer. Isaac Soffer. Robert Solano. Robert Solano. James Stewart. James Stewart. James Stewart. No answer. Del Teague.
Here.
Thank you, Del. Tommy Torres.
Present.
Tommy. Tommy Torres. William Vega.
Present.
Thank you. Maria Viera.
Present.
Thank you. Steven Weidberg.
Here.
Thank you. Simon Weiser.
Here.
Thank you.
By the way, Katz and, and he's trying to, he's on, he's on the line. I don't hear him.
Hello? Hi, I'm okay. You unmute yourself, please.
Who is that?
Hi, Mom.
Katz, he just spoke. Ask for Katz again.
Hello?
Who is that? Who's speaking?
Avram Katz.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Katz. Okay, thank you, Mr. Katz.
I'm Yo Landau. Do you hear me?
Yes, I have you marked present.
Thank you.
Isaac Soffer.
With Mr. Soffer, forty-five members present.
Thank you, Jerry. Can I have an approval of the agenda, please? Rabbi Needleman. The second, who's second? Caponegro. Bill Caponegro, all in favor? Aye. Against?
Aye, 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 aye.
Aye. Against? Is there any abstentions? Motion carried. Approval of the minutes? Can I motion approve the minutes?
I make a motion, Bosina Kaminsky.
I second Iris Cabrera.
Motion made and seconded by Bosina, and seconded by Iris Cabrera. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Against? Abstentions? Motion carried. Committee reports? Yes, Alan.
There is a written report, so everybody make sure you read it. There wasn't a lot to vote on this month. The renewal. Go into the report. It talks about that there was a short list of renewals. We had no problem with that list of renewals, other than we were asking that it better be sent to the SLA to inquire about what address applies for Giando on the water. One or more of those addresses listed on their application is a high-rise apartment building, so their license needs to be looked at to make sure it's covering the right property. So we recommend at the full board, recommend approval of the six renewals that were on the calendar. Okay? Anyone making a motion on that?
Yes.
Who's making a mo, somebody making a motion?
I would like to make the motion to approve that.
I'll second Caponegro. Okay. Roll call vote, please. What was the motion, Tom? You had three items?
No, it was that there's the six renewals that we, the board recommend their approval.
No.
Okay, six approvals.
Renew, renewals.
Mr. Weiser, y'all.
Yes, we hear you.
Yeah, I'm listening.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded that we approved the six renewals. Roll call vote, please, Jerry.
You, oh, okay. I think it's muted now. I put mute. It's muted now.
Jerry?
Yeah, I'm waiting for whatever's going on to stop, but Gina Argento. Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Bomonti.
Yes.
Barrows.
Yes.
Tion Brooks.
Yes.
Eric Brusitis.
Yes.
Tom Burrows.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera. Iris Cabrera. No vote. Phil Caponegro.
Yes.
Frank Carbone.
Yes, yes, yes.
Was that Iris?
Yes.
Thank you. And he before. Mr. Chesler. Michael Chiricella. Teresa Cenciata. Teresa Cenciata.
Yes.
Giovanni D'Amato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater.
Thank you.
Yes.
Arthur Dibinowski.
Yes.
T. Willis Elkins. T. Willis Elkins.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster.
Yes, yes, yes.
Joel Goldstein. Joel Goldstein.
Yes.
Joel Gross.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Moisha Indig. Bosina Kaminsky.
Yes.
Avram Katz.
Yes.
William Claggsbald.
Yes.
Ryan Coonan.
Yes.
Yo Landau.
Yes.
Marie Leanza. Marie Leanza.
Yes.
Abraham Liebovitz.
Yes.
Yo Lo.
Yes.
Trina McKeva.
Yes.
Sante Mchelli.
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz.
Yes.
Martin Needleman.
He lost. He lost the connection.
Martin Needleman.
He was there earlier.
His thumb is up and he's saying yes.
Rabbi Needleman.
Yes.
Karen Nieves.
Yes.
Mary O'Dommerick.
Yes.
Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Dana Racklin.
Yes.
Bella Sable. Bella Sable. No vote. Isaac Soffer.
Yes.
Robert Solano. James Stewart. Del Teague.
Yes.
Tommy Torres. Tommy Torres. William Vega.
Yes.
Yes, Tommy.
Yes, for Tommy. Mr. Vega?
Yes, William, yes.
Maria Viera. Can only vote once. Maria Viera.
Yes.
Stephen Weidberg.
Yes.
Simon Weiser.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Only get one vote. Forty-three in the affirmative. Motion passes.
Thank you so much, Jerry. Nice time for the elections, Jerry.
No, no, oh, wait. Oh, okay. I'll do the other half later.
Yeah, it's time for the elections.
Okay.
Do you want me to continue?
Going on the election.
Yeah. Madam Chair. Hello?
Yes.
Okay, so in order to make this as painless as possible, when I call your name, I will then call the position, kindly answer with the name of the candidate that you're voting for, okay?
No. I need the list.
I'm sorry, in the past, we've heard from contested seats, and I wonder if we could maybe do that for the chair position?
I'm sorry? What is the question?
In the last election...
The members have to vote for each position, whether contested or not contested.
No, I understand, but we've had, I remember in the last chair election, we did have a moment for speeches, but...
Nobody said they want, they didn't submit that they want to speak, Eric.
The bylaws required advance notice from the candidate.
Okay.
He chose to speak. No one, no one requested time to speak.
Okay, that's fine. Just wanted to get...
I'll call the members, the board member's name, and I'll call the position, kindly respond with your choice for that position. I also have to call positions that are uncontested. They still have to be voted into office per the New York State Public Offices War.
Can I ask a question?
I was just gonna say, before I begin, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, so I just want to ask, is something sent around with the candidates?
I'm sorry?
Was there, was there an email sent around with candidates?
Was sent with the meeting notice.
What?
It was sent with the meeting notice per the bylaws.
It's at the bottom.
Can I, can I ask everybody to mute themselves if you're not speaking, so we can get rid of some of the background noise? Please mute yourself if you're not speaking.
It's at the bottom.
Can we put the list of the things that are on the screen? It's gonna make it easier for everybody.
Are we ready?
Yes. And we can get rid of the background noise. There's a lot of background noise. Please mute yourself if you're not speaking.
Gina Argento. Gina Argento. Absent. Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes, here.
For chairperson, how do you vote?
Fear.
I'm sorry?
Madame Fear.
Okay, Fuller. Okay, thank you. For first vice chair, how do you vote?
Mr. Simon.
Thank you. For second vice chair.
Gina.
No, second vice chair.
No, that was Simon and the second vice chair.
There's one candidate for second vice chair. That's Ms. Teague.
Ms. Teague, right, yes.
So how do you vote?
Ms. Ms. Teague.
Okay, thank you. For third vice chair.
Who is that on that? Because I don't have the list handy.
It's Ms. Barrows or Ms. Foster?
Ms. Barrows, please.
Ms. Barrows, so noted. For financial secretary.
That is the position that is the lady holding right now.
Yes, Ms. Viera.
Yes, Ms. Viera, that's correct.
Is that who you vote for?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Viera. For recording secretary.
That's Sonia.
Yes. Member at large.
Mike Caponegro.
That's Phil's brother, but yes.
Yes, yes.
Only kidding, only kidding. For attendance committee, you can vote for one, two, three.
Okay, what are the names?
Mr. Brusitis.
Yes.
Mr. Mchelli.
Yes.
And Rabbi Needleman.
Yes, three of them, yes.
Okay, thank you. That completes your ballot.
Thank you.
Lisa Bomonti.
Perry.
For chair.
Chair Fuller.
For first vice chairperson.
Simon.
For second vice chairperson.
Del Teague.
For third vice chairperson.
Ms. Barrows.
For financial secretary.
Ms. Viera.
For recording secretary.
Sonia.
For member at large.
Phil Caponegro.
For attendance committee.
Rabbi Needleman. Baritis, and I'm sorry if I'm, all three of them, it's fine.
Okay. It's missed, it's, well, it's missed, I really need you to say it, I'm sorry. So it's Mr. Brusitis.
Mr. Brusitis.
Mr. Mchelli.
Mr. Mchelli.
And Rabbi Needleman. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't want anybody to contest if you say for whatever, whatever, and then we don't have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Gina Barrows. Gina?
Yes, I am here. Do you hear me?
How do you, yes, I can. For chairperson?
The, 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 Ms. Fuller.
For first vice chairperson.
Simon. Simon Weiser.
Yes. For second vice chair.
Del Teague.
For third vice chair.
Gina Barrows.
For financial secretary.
Maria Viera.
For recording secretary.
Sonia Iglesias.
For member at large.
Phil Caponegro.
For attendance committee.
Mr. Eric Brusitis, Mr. Santi.
Mchelli.
And who's the last person?
Rabbi Needleman.
Rabbi Needleman.
Thank you. Tion Brooks.
Yes, present.
Yes, how do you vote for chairperson?
Chair Fuller.
For first vice chair.
Dana.
Thank you. Second vice chair.
Del Teague.
Third vice chair.
Julia Foster.
Thank you. Financial secretary.
Maria Bear.
Thank you. Recording secretary.
Sonia Iglesias.
Member at large.
Phil Caponegro.
Attendance committee.
Eric Brusaski. Santi Mchelli, and Rabbi Needleman.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Eric Brusitis.
Here.
How do you vote for chair?
Chesler.
First vice.
Racklin.
Second vice.
I don't have that list, actually, so I'm gonna...
Well, I, I, I can either, the, the rest of the candidates are uncontested, but you still have to register a vote or abstain. So second vice chair, Del Teague?
Yes.
You're voting for Del?
Yes.
Yes. Third vice chair, it's Gina Barrows or Julia Foster?
Gina Barrows.
I'm reading the names in alphabetical order.
Okay.
Per the bylaws. Financial secretary.
Steven Weidberg?
No, it's Maria Viera.
Sorry, Maria Viera. Sorry, sorry.
Recording secretary.
Sonia.
Yes. Member at large.
Phil Caponegro.
Yes. And the attendance committee.
Eric Brusitis, Rabbi Needleman, and Santi Mchelli.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tom Burrows. For chairperson, how do you vote? Tom? Tom Burrows.
Wait, wait, wait. Where's my microphone?
I hear you now. I hear you. I hear you.
You hear me? Okay.
How do you vote for chair?
Steve Chesler.
First vice.
Dana Racklin. I lost my list.
Second vice.
Okay, I lost my list. Hang on. I don't know where my list went. I had it on my screen. Oh, Del Teague.
Third vice.
Julia, Gina Barrows.
Financial secretary.
Maria Viera.
Recording secretary.
Sonia Iglesias.
Member at large.
Philip Caponegro.
Attendance committee.
Eric Brusitis, Santi Mchelli, Rabbi Needleman.
Thank you, sir. Iris Cabrera.
I'm here, but I don't find the list, so you're gonna, I'm gonna need you to send the name, please.
Okay, again, alphabetical order. For chairperson, Stephen Chesler or Diallo Fuller?
Diallo.
First vice chairperson, Dana Racklin or Simon Weiser?
Simon.
Second vice chairperson, Del Teague, unopposed.
Del Teague.
Third vice chairperson, Gina Barrows or Julia Foster?
Gina Barrows.
Financial secretary, Maria Viera, unopposed.
Maria Viera.
Recording secretary, Sonia Iglesias, unopposed.
Sonia Iglesias.
Member at large, Phil Caponegro, unopposed.
Phil Caponegro.
Attendance committee, unopposed. Eric Brusitis, Santi Mchelli, Rabbi Needleman.
Eric. Rabbi Needleman, and what was the other name?
Santi Mchelli.
Santi Mchelli, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Phil Caponegro, for chairperson, how do you vote?
You with me, Jerry?
Yes, sir. How do you vote?
Fuller. Weiser.
Hold on, hold on. I gotta go. I gotta sheet. Go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Del Teague.
Yes.
I'm going to abstain from the next vote, Jerry.
Okay.
Maria.
Yes.
Sonia.
Yes.
Myself, of course.
By name, sir.
All Phil Caponegro.
Thank you, sir.
And Eric.
Yes.
Rabbi Needleman.
I'm sorry, it broke up there.
Sorry, Santi.
Okay, and Rabbi. Okay, thank you. Frank Carbone.
Fuller.
Okay.
Simon Weiser.
Okay.
Del Teague.
Got it.
Julia Foster.
Got it.
Maria Viera.
Got it.
Sonia Iglesias.
Got it.
Phil Caponegro.
Got it.
Santi Machelli.
Yes.
Rabbi Niederman.
Yes.
And Eric Brusitis.
Yes, thank you. It should all, it should all be as easy as that. Mr. Chessler.
Stephen Chessler for chair. Uh, Dana Racklin for first vice chair. Del Teague for second vice chair.
Got it.
Gina Barros for third vice chair. Uh, Sonia Iglesias for, um...
You skipped Viera, are you, are you?
Oh, sorry. Okay, Maria Viera for financial secretary.
Okay.
Sonia Iglesias for, uh, recording secretary.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro for member at large.
Yes.
Uh, Santi Machelli, I'm sorry, Eric Brusitis, Santi Machelli and Rabbi Niederman for attendance.
Got it, thank you. Michael Chiracella. Michael Chiracella? Michael Chiracella. Absent. Teresa Cinciatto.
Uh, Delise Fuller for chairperson.
Got it.
First vice chairperson, Simon Weiser.
Got it.
Second vice chairperson, Del Teague.
Got it.
Third vice chairperson, Gina Barros.
Got it.
Financial secretary, Maria Viera.
Got it.
Recording secretary, Sonia Iglesias.
Got it.
Member at large, Phil Caponegro.
Got it.
The attendances, Eric Brusitis.
Got it. Yes.
And Rabbi David Niederman.
Thank you, Tish. Giovanni Damato. Giovanni?
I'm here, no, no, I'm here.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to get the ballot up. So, uh, for chair...
For chairperson?
Chessler.
Can you speak up a little, please?
Uh, you, you hear me?
Yes, but barely. Yes. Yes, yes.
So then Dana for, uh, vice chair?
Dana, yes.
Yep, okay. Del?
Yes.
Julia?
Wait a minute, one minute. Got it.
Okay, uh, Maria?
Got it.
Sonia?
Got it. Got it.
Eric?
Got it.
Santi and Rabbi Niederman.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Erin Drinkwater. Erin?
For chair, Steve Chessler for first vice chair, Dana Racklin.
Get one minute, I'm going down the line. What, uh, for first vice?
First vice Dana.
Okay.
Second Del.
Yes.
Third Gina.
Yes.
Financial secretary, Maria Rivera.
Yes.
Recording secretary, Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Uh, member at large, Phil Caponegro.
Thank you.
And then attendance committee, uh, Eric, Santi Machelli and Rabbi Niederman.
Thank you. Arthur Dimonowski. Arthur?
Yes, first one is going Ms. Fuller.
Okay.
Del Teague.
Wait, wait, first vice was who?
Simon.
Okay.
Then there's Del Teague, second vice.
Yes.
Then Gina Barros.
Yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Sonia.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Rabbi Niederman.
Yes.
Santi Machelli.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
T. Willis Alkins.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Steve Chessler for chair.
Okay.
Dana Racklin.
Okay.
Del Teague.
Yes.
Gina Barros.
Yes.
Uh, Maria Viera.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro.
Yes.
Brusitis.
Yes.
Machelli and Niederman, Rabbi Niederman.
Thank you, sir. Julia Amanda Foster.
It's me.
Yes.
Chairperson Fuller? I don't know why we have an echo.
That's okay, as long as I can hear you, go ahead.
Simon.
Yes.
Del Teague.
Yes.
Sorry Gina, myself, Julia.
Maria, yes.
Me- Maria Viera.
Yes.
Sonia.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro, thank you Phil.
Yes.
Eric Brusitis.
Yes.
Rabbi Niederman.
Yes.
Santos Machinelli.
Thank you. Chairperson Fuller. Chair Fuller. I can't hear you if you're...
Okay.
Okay.
D'Alis Fuller.
Yes.
Simon Weiser.
Yes.
Del Teague.
Yes.
Gina Barros.
Yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Santi Machelli.
Yes.
Rabbi Niederman.
Yes. Joel Goldstein. Joel Goldstein, how do you vote for chair?
Chair, Delise Fuller.
Yes.
Simon Weiser.
Yes.
Second vice, Del Teague.
Yes.
Um, third vice chairman, Gina Barros.
Yes.
Financial secretary, Maria Viera.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Philip Caponegro.
Yes.
Eric Brusitis.
Yes. Machelli, yes.
Rabbi David Niederman.
Rabbi Niederman, yes, thank you. Joel Gross. Mr. Gross?
Yes, I'm voting for Fuller.
I'm sorry?
I'm voting for Fuller.
Fuller, yes.
Simon.
Yes.
Del Teague.
Yes.
Barros. Maria.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Rabbi Niederman.
Yes.
For Foster.
No, no. Well, who is the attendance committee vote?
Foster?
No.
Now what is their third name?
There's three people on the attendance committee. Eric Brusitis, Santi Machelli, Rabbi Niederman.
All three.
Okay, now for third vice, it's Gina Barros or Julia Foster?
Abstained. Uh, hello? Julia Foster.
I'm sorry?
I was writing down, I'm see, I'm mixing up Foster, Julia Foster.
For third vice, Julia Foster. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sonia Iglesias. Sonia? Sonia Iglesias.
Hold on, you hear me now, Jerry?
I do.
Sorry, for chair, uh, chairperson Fuller?
Okay.
For first vice, Simon Weiser.
Okay.
Second vice, Del Teague.
Okay.
Third, I'm abstaining, I, I'm, I'm, I'm stuck.
Okay.
For, uh, financial secretary, Maria Viera.
Okay.
Recording secretary, Sonia Iglesias.
Okay.
Member at large, Phil Caponegro.
Yes.
For the attendance committee, Mr. Bruselli. Mr. Rabbi Niederman.
Yes.
And Mr. Santi Machelli.
Thank you. Moisha Indig. Mr. Indig? Moisha Indig.
He's on the phone, but you don't hear him.
Hello, you hear me?
Mr. Indig?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, how do you vote for chairperson?
Fuller. Simon. Del.
Okay. Third vice?
What?
Third vice?
Gina Barros.
Okay. Financial secretary, yes.
Maria. Sonia.
Yes. Yes.
Machelli, Adic, Rabbi Niederman.
Thank you, sir. Bozina Kaminsky.
Uh, for chairperson, uh, Delis Fuller.
Okay.
Vice chair, uh, Simon Weiser.
Okay.
Vice chairperson, Del Teague.
Yes.
Third vice person, Gina Barros. Financial, financial secretary, Maria Viera.
Yes.
Recording secretary, Sonia.
Yes.
Member at large, Phil.
Yes.
And Eric, Santi Machelli and Rabbi Niederman.
Thank you. Avram Katz.
Yes.
How do you vote for chair?
Ms. Fuller.
First vice.
Simon.
Yes.
Del Teague.
Yes.
Gina Barros.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes. Yes.
Philip.
Yes.
Mr. Brusitis.
Yes.
Mr. Machelli.
Yes. Thank you, sir. William Klagsbold.
Okay, Chair Fuller.
Yes.
Simon Weiser.
Yes.
Del Teague.
Yes.
Gina Barros.
Yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro.
Yes.
Rabbi Niederman.
Yes.
Eric Brusitis.
Yes.
Santi Machelli.
Yes. We're halfway there, guys. Ryan Coonan. How do you vote for chair?
Uh, Chessler.
Yes.
Uh, Racklin.
Yes.
Del Teague.
Yes.
Gina Barros.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Viera.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro.
Yes.
Eric Brusitis.
Yes.
Santi Machelli, uh, Rabbi Niederman.
Thank you. Yol Landau. How do you vote for chairs?
Fuller, Simon.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Sanio.
Wait, 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 wait. Financial secretary.
Sanio.
I can't hear you.
Sanio.
The candidate is Maria Viera.
Oh, Maria, sorry.
Re- Recording secretary?
Then Sanio and Phil.
Okay. At large?
Then Machelli, Niederman and Eric.
No, Marie, mute your microphone, please. Marie, mute your microphone. Member at large. It's Mr. Caponegro as the candidate, sir. Mr. Landau.
Yeah, you got my all three?
No.
And Eric.
Are, are you voting for member at large, sir, for Mr. Caponegro?
Yes, sure.
Okay, and the attendance committee?
Yes. Machelli, Niederman and Eric.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Marie Lianza.
Fuller, chair.
Hold on, got it.
Um, uh, Simon.
Got it.
Uh, Del Teague.
Got it.
Gina.
Got it.
Maria Rivera.
Got it.
Sonia. Sonia.
Got it.
Philip.
Got it.
Eric.
Yes.
Mar- Marcelli.
Yes.
Rabbi David Needleman.
Got it. Abraham Libavitz.
Yes.
How do you vote for Chair, sir?
Fuller.
Got it.
Simon.
Got it.
Del Tank.
Got it.
Gina.
Got it.
Maria.
Got it.
Sonia.
Got it.
Philip.
Got it.
Eric.
Yes.
Sante.
Got it.
Rabbi Needleman.
Got it. Thank you. Yo Lo.
Yes, here I am.
How do you vote for Chair, sir?
Uh, Chair Fuller.
Yes.
Uh, Simon Weiser.
Yes.
Del Teague.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Philip Caponegro.
Yes.
Eric Bresidas, Santi Machelli and Rabbi Needleman.
Thank you, sir. Trina McKeever. Trina?
Yeah, okay.
How do you vote for Chair?
Steve Chessler, Dana Racklin, Del Teague.
Hold on, hold on, little slow, I'm going down the line. Del Teague, okay?
Uh, Gina.
Gina.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Sonia.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Um, Sante and Rabbi Needleman.
Thank you. Sante Machelli.
Yeah, um, Chessler.
Yes.
Racklin. Teague.
Yes.
Barrows.
Yes.
Viera, Iglesias, Caponegro, Eric, Sante, Needleman.
Thank you. Toby Moskovitz.
Uh, Chairperson Fuller.
Yes.
Simon Weiser.
Yes.
Del Teague.
Yes.
Gina Barrows, Maria Viera, Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Caponegro.
Yes.
The Attendance Committee members, Bresidas, Sante Machelli and Rabbi Needleman.
Thank you. Martin Needleman. Marty? I can't do this one with sign language, my friend. I can't hear you. I can't hear you. Marty, I can't hear you. If you're having a problem with your connection, I could see you, I just can't hear you. It's impossible to do this vote with sign language.
How about if he puts it in the chat?
No, he'll call me. Call me at the office, Marty. Do you have somebody there to help you with that? We can't hear you, Marty. You want to call the office? You're muted, Marty. Could you unmute your mic? I can see you're muted. Can you unmute your microphone? Marty? Marty, can you hear me? You want to call me at the office? Three eight nine zero 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 nine. Seven one eight three eight nine zero 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 nine. Just bear with me, everyone, please. I'm sorry. I was having trouble with my audio earlier, too. Marty? Hi. No, that's okay. It happens. It happened to me before, too. How do you vote for Chair, sir? I'm sorry? I'm staying for Chair. How do you vote for First Vice Chair? Simon Weiser. How do you vote for Second Vice Chair?
Del Teague.
Yes.
First is Gina Barrows.
Yes, Gina Barrows. Financial Secretary.
Maria Viera.
Yes. 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 Thank you, Marty. Take care. That's okay. Have a good evening. Rabbi Needleman.
You hear me?
Yes. How do you vote for Chair, sir, Rabbi?
Chair Fuller.
Yes.
Simon Weiser.
Yes.
Del Teague.
Yes.
Gina, Maria, Sonia.
Yes. Yes.
Santo, myself.
Yes, thank you, Rabbi. Karen Neves.
Jerry, I'm, I'm chatting with Karen. She's, she got bo- she got booted out of her, uh, system. She's going to call you.
Okay. You want to, you want to play? Eric, do you know the Jeopardy theme song so we could wait? Like da 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 da. There we go. Karen? Oh, there's nobody there. That was odd. Eric, if that was her.
She says it's busy, Jer.
No, there's nobody on the phone. Phones are all open. I just, I just answered it. Three eight nine triple oh nine.
Got it. Hang on.
Thank you for your patience, everyone.
Okay, she's calling. Blah blah.
Hello?
Hello?
Karen, how are you?
Good, I'm fine.
That's okay. How do you vote for Chair?
Um, okay, go, go through the list.
Yes, Chair? How do you vote for Chair? Stephen Chessler, Dialis Fuller.
Oh, my God.
Okay.
Jesus Christ.
First, fir- first Vice Chair, Dana Racklin, Simon Weiser.
Oh, geez. Um, Dana?
Okay. Second Vice Chair, Del Teague. Unopposed. Third Vice Chair, Gina Barrows or Julia Foster?
Gina.
Financial Secretary. Maria Viera, unopposed. Recording Secretary Sonia Iglesias, unopposed.
Sonia.
Member at Large, Phil Caponegro, unopposed. Attendance Committee, vote for one, two, three or none. Eric Bresidas, Sante Machelli, Rabbi Needleman.
Um, all three.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mario Dahmerk.
Okay, it's Dialis Fuller.
Yes.
Simon.
Yes.
Del.
Yes.
Julia Foster.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Sonia.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Rabbi Needleman, Eric and Sante.
Thank you. Janice Peterson. Janice Peterson.
Yeah, I'm here. Fuller.
I didn't hear a word. I don't know what's, what, it sounds like an alarm going off. Go ahead.
Well, I'm trying to hold a phone for Bella. I don't know if that's it. Maybe.
Well, go ahead. How do you vote?
Uh, Fuller.
Yes.
Simon.
Yes.
Del.
Yes. I didn't, I didn't hear that one. Third Vice?
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Um, Maria Viera.
Yes.
Sonia.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Eric, Sante and Rabbi.
Thank you. Dana Racklin.
God.
Dana?
Yeah, I was just waiting for.
Yes, that's okay.
Um.
How do you vote for Chair?
Uh, Steve Chessler.
Yes.
Dana Racklin.
Yes.
Del Teague.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro.
Yes.
Eric Bresidas.
Yes.
Sante Machelli, Rabbi David Needleman.
Thank you. Bella Sable.
She's on the phone, uh, uh.
She has to call the office. If she, if she can't respond, she has to call the office.
Call the office, Bella. Huh? Okay.
Can you just under the phone?
I was using my phone, but he wants the office.
No, we were getting too ecstatic when she held the phone next to the, uh.
It's better now, but.
You want to, I mean, if you still have it, we could try it, but if we get all that static.
Bella? No. It's not. Call the office. Call the office. Okay? She's heard everything all night, but she couldn't get on.
Marie? Oh, here she is. Never mind. Hello, Ms. Sam, Ms.?
Hi, this is Bella Sable.
Okay, it's, it's. Oh, my Lord. How do you vote for Chair? Chair for Chair? Yes. For First. Yes. 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 Well, you, you skipped, are you voting for Recording Secretary? Sonia Iglesias? Okay, for Member at Large? Member at Large, Phil Caponegro. Okay, and the Attendance Committee? Rabbi Needleman, Sante Machelli, Eric Bresidas. Eric Bresidas. Okay. Thank you. I don't know what she said. Isaac Sulfer. Mr. Sulfer, how do you vote for Chair?
Dialis Fuller, Simon Weiser.
Yes. Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Caponegro.
Yes.
Eric Bresidas.
Yes.
Rabbi David Needleman.
Thank you. Robert Solano, Mr. Solano? Going once, Mr. Solano, going twice. Mr. Solano, absent. Mr. Stewart, James Stewart?
Yes, sir.
How do you vote for Chair?
Mr. Chessler?
Yes.
Ms. Racklin?
Yes.
Ms. Teague?
Yes.
Ms. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Viera?
Yes.
Ms. Iglesias?
Yes.
Mr. Caponegro?
Yes.
Mr. Bresidas?
Yes.
Mr. Machelli?
Yes.
Rabbi Needleman.
Thank you, sir. Del Teague. Del?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, sorry, I got knocked off. Okay.
That's okay. For Chair?
Uh, Steve Chessler. And then Simon Weiser. Del Teague.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro.
Yes.
Eric Bresidas.
Yes.
Sante Machelli.
Yes.
Rabbi Needleman.
Yes. Thank you. Tommy Torres. Tommy?
Happy New Year, Jerry.
Happy New Year, sir. How do you vote for Chair?
Chair Fuller, for Chair.
Yes. First Vice?
Simon.
Yes. Second Vice?
Del Teague.
Yes. Third Vice?
Ooh, tough one. Barrows.
Fi- Financial Secretary?
Viera.
Yes. Recording Secretary?
Sonia Iglesias.
Member at Large?
Phil Caponegro.
Attendance Committee, one, two, three or none?
I'll start off with Rabbi Needleman.
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Santo.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Vega, in the house?
Yes, in the house.
Yes, sir. How do you vote for Chair?
Steve?
Yes.
Then Simon.
Yes.
Then Del Teague.
Yes.
And Julia.
I'm sorry?
Julia?
Yes. Financial Secretary?
Sonia?
No, Financial Secretary. That's, that's Ms. Viera, okay. Recording Secretary?
Uh, Sonia?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sante and Rabbi.
Thank you. Maria Viera. Maria Viera.
I'm here.
Okay. How do you vote for Chair?
Chair Fuller.
First Vice?
Simon Weiser.
Second Vice?
Del Teague.
Third Vice?
Gina Barrows.
Thank you. Financial Secretary?
Maria Viera.
Okay. Sonia Iglesias, Recording Secretary. I'm getting slap happy, I'm sorry.
Sonia Iglesias.
Recording Secretary. Member at Large?
Phil Caponegro.
Attendance Committee?
Eric Bresidas, Sante Machelli, Rabbi Needleman.
Thank you. Two to go. Last but not least, not, not last and not least, Mr. Weidberg. Steve?
I'm sorry.
Steve?
Dialis?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Yes.
Yeah, Simon.
Yes.
Gina. I'm sorry, Del.
Wait, wait. Del, yes.
Del, Gina.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Sonia.
Yes.
Philip.
Yes.
Rabbi Needleman.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
And Sante.
Yes. Last but least, Simon Weiser.
Can you hear me?
Yes. How do you vote for Chair?
Chair Fuller?
Yes.
I vote, I vote for myself. Del Teague, Barrows.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Barrows.
Maria Viera.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro.
Yes.
And for Rabbi Needleman.
And, and what?
Rabbi Needleman.
You're voting for one?
Yes.
Okay. That completes the vote, Madam Chair. Just give me a couple of minutes and I will tally them.
Okay, um.
Is there any, well, let me just say, is there anybody that, that hasn't been called, that hasn't voted? Okay.
Okay, we'll go on.
If for some reason someone can hear me and they haven't voted, again, call the office, seven one eight three eight nine zero 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 nine.
Thank, thank you, Jared. We'll continue with the reports and you can let us know when you're ready.
Yes, and thank, I thank everybody for their patience. I know this wasn't easy, but this is what the Lord Department wanted.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, next, uh, report Parks and Waterfront?
Wait, I have to finish my other half.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom, you have another one?
There were only four new applications on, uh, our last meeting. And we had put a new system into place at the last meeting requiring that the applicants show up through, to our meetings on WebEx. Um, none of the applicants tried to, responded to the office to sign up to speak at our meeting. So we're recommending that all four of the new applications, uh, not be approved. Motion?
Just answer a question, Tom. Am I allowed to ask a question?
Yes.
I just want, I mean, it sounds a little strange that people would ask for a liquor license and just not show up. How is this notice sent to them?
They're going to get it anyway, so they don't care.
Oh, so they're saying that they knew that they had to come, they just ignored it? Ask me how the notice was sent to the, the restaurant owners.
I'm as, well, they have to send in their notice to us of thirty day renew, new application. And then we respond to them. Marie lets them know that we've received their application and that they need to show up at our committee meeting. Uh, and before the committee meeting, they need to send us a copy of our application along with the signed stipulations and plan to be at our meeting. Um, none of them responded, so.
Us, it's a lost opportunity in the public forum if they don't show up. So if you could just make sure that there's a clear communication to them how to, you know, how to do it. Let's try to make a little extra effort because like you, like you said, they think they're going to get it anyhow. We're losing that opportunity in the, in the digital forum to, to give anybody, even whether it's neighbors who have an issue with chance to keep up.
Correct. Well. Our state elects have to sort of light a fire under the state SLA. So, um, you know, the, the only thing that the state requires is that they notice that they're applying. We created all of the things to respond to the SLA to say what it is that we're doing. So we're going to tell the SLA that we're voting to not approve them because none of them responded. So maybe the SLA will start saying to them when they show up at their meetings, did you respond to the community board? And if they say no, they'll send them back to start all over again.
I hope it happens. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, it's, it's a struggle, let me tell you.
But I would like to make the motion to approve the recommendation.
I second the motion, Bojanakeminski.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. We don't have, we don't have Jared to call the roll call. So I'm just going to do it verbally. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Next meeting is January twenty-sixth at six thirty.
Tom.
Go through the.
Wait, we didn't ask if anyone was, again.
Um, I didn't finish.
Thank you.
Um, I didn't finish.
Sorry.
Anyone a guess? Please abstentions? Motion carried. Contender, um, somebody.
Forgive me, trying to get out of here. Anyway, the next meeting is January twenty-sixth. There's seventeen new and sixteen renewals. Please go through them. If you know any of the people, tell them they need to be in touch with us. If you have any issues with any of those, please let us know, okay? Thank you.
Tom. Anybody that's not speaking, could you mute yourself? No question for Tom.
Not all of it.
You need to prepare for your inauguration party.
Anybody that's not, uh, next, um, committee report is Parks and Waterfront, anybody that's not speaking, please mute yourself.
Madam Chair. Uh, good evening. Okay?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody, we had our, uh, committee meeting on January, uh, seventh. Uh, we did have a call, and I want to thank my members who came and all. Uh, one of the first items on our agenda was the four seventy Kent Avenue, uh, waterfront promenade, you might have remembered that from our, uh, December meeting. We were not happy with their design, so we decided to send a letter to Mr. Mark Vigrino, the developer at four seventy Kent, demanding that the design of the esplanade adhere to the spirit of the two thousand and nine waterfront design guideline text amendment. Uh, it calls for direct access to the water, softer edges and surfaces, curved lineature design. Uh, we also want to, uh, add to the, to the comments that we didn't care for the seating, uh, design. They didn't, they didn't include backs on the chairs, so we thought that was another element and we'd like to, uh, address to him. Uh, and also in that, we were sending copies from Councilman's office, Sept Lenzel's office, DC Chair L.A.O., and Parks Commissioner Silva, all reporting of our, our situation. Uh, with that, uh, matter of fact, I'd like a, a vote. I'd like to get a, a motion and a vote on that, please.
What exactly are you asking for in the vote?
Uh, to send a letter of, a, a letter to the, to, to the developer.
Okay. Everybody understand the vote, uh, can I have a motion, please?
Chancellor makes a motion.
I second that.
Sonia, okay.
Motion made by Chancellor, seconded by Sonia, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Against? Abstentions? Motion carried.
And the second item on our, our, uh, agenda was, uh, Carson Avenue Triangle Park. Uh, members of the community came by, they would like a letter of support. Sent a letter to the Parks Department that they want to do some upgrading in the, uh, Carson Triangle. Uh, they want to replace the sidewalk, they want to upgrade the trees, they want to add some fencing. Uh, and across the street, they want to upgrade the playground across the street by adding some playground equipment, so that's, that's the motion, Madam Chair, to send a letter to Parks in support of the community, uh, direction.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion, Teague.
Second. Bersitis.
Motion made by Del Teague, seconded by Eric Bersitis, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Against? Abstentions? Motion carried.
And, and the last thing I'll talk about today is we, we, we heard this despicable situation that's going on in state parks. We will definitely make a, uh, meeting to meet with, with, uh, Leslie, but, uh, I think right now, maybe in the, you know, right away, we should send a letter to the governor, saying how, you know, our displeasure with the situation there, with the lack of, uh, community, uh, input into it. Um, I'd like, if we could get a motion on that, so we could get that letter out immediately, and, and go from there. Make a motion, Steve Chancellor.
I second that.
Without a doubt.
Definitely.
Yeah.
State Parks Commissioner. Yes, Silver and all the state officials, and even our council people, let's let them know what the situation is here.
Okay, you want to send a letter, uh, to all the local officials and the mayor about the state park, but no community, had no community involved?
Right, and definitely the governor, he's the main one.
Yeah.
Governor.
Governor's definitely the main one.
It's going to the governor, with the CCs, everybody else?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Against? Abstentions? Motion carried.
That's it, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, uh, next, uh, report is land use, Del.
Okay, thank you, can you hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, um, so, I don't have anything to be voted on, uh, I just want to, before we even start, until we are able to use the save the date, um, you know, uh, part of our website, I want to mention again to everyone that Land Use meets the first Monday of every month, unless that Monday is a holiday, and as far as I know, there, that doesn't happen in the, in the next year. Uh, and please, people are invited to attend, we want community input. So, as you know, we continued our discussion with city planning about getting more flexibility with our available zoning tools, and wanted, uh, information about what was going on with the, the change in, uh, in the, uh, zoning tools available to the Gowanus area. Uh, so Alex Summer, Carenza Wood, and Alexandra Patty Diaz were present from City Planning, DCP. And then, we were also joined by Richard Barrack from the Borough President's Office, Ben Solitaire from, uh, Councilmember Levin's office, and Asha Freeman from, uh, Councilmember Reynoso's office. Now, I wanted to say that all of those, all of the, um, people representing, uh, DCP and the Borough President and our council members expressed the unequivocal, um, availability to now work with us, to come up with ideas for, uh, rezoning and in, in our district. Uh, and it seems like it's a good time, because as Alex Summer went through the, um, his lecture on zoning and, and talking about Gowanus, he did say that a number of things about our zoning are outdated, and so, um, we thought this is, this is a very good time, and so, ano- another reason why I welcome people who are not, uh, committee members to come to our, our meetings. Um, so we've attached. Uh, Rabbi, I think maybe you should mute yourself. So, we've, I've, we've attached the, uh, presentation that Alex gave us, going over to the charts outlining the, um, the, uh, meaning of the, uh, zoning, uh, 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 what do you call it, the, the use groups, and the parking requirements, and also, um, you can find the Gowanus plan, it's very easily found online. Uh, and then, of course, there's a, uh, the North Brooklyn, uh, study that we should all, or anyone interested, should, should familiarize yourselves with. So, um, as far as the Gow- Gowanus plan goes, it's not official yet, but the overall plan has, uh, been, the, 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 the goals are to provide a more affordable housing, uh, new jobs, uh, facilitate community resources, like more open space in parks and schools, and to fix up their, their waterfront and clean up their brownfields. Now, all of these amenities are going to be balanced by essentially allowing larger building envelopes. So there, the, the priorities of, for the Gowanus area are not necessarily the same as ours, because we have a, a tremendous, uh, uh, concern about the package, you know, the large, getting larger packages for our buildings. However, that doesn't mean we can't really look at it and take a good look and see what we might want from, from Gowanus. Uh, the other thing that we discussed were the, um, the special, the idea that special permits finally might be, uh, required for new hotels. So, as you all know, we've been asking for this for ages and ages, and so this is a, um, a, a proposal to now have the hotel applicants have to get, um, approval of community boards and go through the whole special permit, um, application in mixed use and commercial districts. There is going to be a scoping meeting on January twenty-second at two P.M., and I've asked the office to find out how we can have access to that meeting. Um, so I just, you know, and, and again, I, I did want to make sure that this was going to be treated like other special per- permits, where they're gonna have to come before the community boards, as well as before, of course, the Borough President and the, and the, uh, council, and they assured us that they would. But I think that, um, I know a, a number of us, I think, are gonna want to check out that scoping meeting. So for future discussions, the committee agreed to, we, we would familiarize ourselves with the Gowanus plan and North Brooklyn study, and then we can start talking further about all the geography of our district and what our wants are for zoning, uh, and uses throughout the district. We also discussed the possibility of, uh, going back to that idea of having a more equitable, um, arrangement for the IBZ businesses that were not included in that fourteen block rezoning around twenty-five Kent Avenue. Richard Barrack, uh, would I think be a very valuable resource, and he's very willing to work with us. And, um, we also, uh, agreed to explore with, uh, with city planning and the Borough President's Office and the council members, the possibility of re- requiring developers to provide support for off-site, uh, open spaces, and, and, and also enforcing unmet conditions by developers who are supposed to be providing space for community facilities, like the Vale Hotel, and who have not. So, that's, that's, that's it in a nutshell. Um, and that's the end of, that's all I have for my report for tonight.
Thank you, Del, uh, Jared, you ready with the calculations, right?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
I'm ready.
For chairperson, Stephen Chesler, fourteen votes. The Alice Fuller, thirty-two votes. For first vice chairperson, Dana Rackland, thirteen votes, Simon Weiser, thirty-four votes. For second vice chairperson, Del Teague, forty-seven votes. For third vice chairperson, Gina Barrows, thirty-eight votes, Julia Foster, seven votes. For financial secretary, Maria Viera, forty-seven votes. For recording secretary, Sonia Iglesias, forty-seven votes. For member at large, Phil Caponegro, forty-seven votes. For attendance committee, Eric Bersitis, forty-six votes. Sante Michele, forty-six votes. Rabbi David Niederman, forty-seven votes. Again, these, these mo- votes will be recorded in the minutes for the January meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Jared, thank you so much, everyone, for your vote, I look forward to working with you for the next, uh, few months, and hopefully, uh, we can get a lot done in these unprecedented times, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
And Del?
Yes.
Well, Dallas, just one of the congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Next item is Land Use Subcommittee. Trina?
Okay, the Landmark Subcommittee. Um, I'm sorry. That's okay. Uh, we learned at the committee through a landmarks application that the Williamsburg houses are, that there's a collaboration between a developer, the RDC Development, and the NYCHA, the Williamsburg houses, for a, an interior and exterior, um, a complete renovation. And what they, what was brought to us was just, just the windows, does, part of the design for the exterior. And, um, but I think, first of all, we were surprised to learn about the renovation, that the, that a major renovation to a NYCHA project was coming to the community board as a landmark application for the windows, that we, that was the first that we. Um, and the win- the windows themselves were really a hallmark of the original design. The Williamsburg houses were built in, in the thirties and, um, I mean, they, it was one of the first affordable hous- housing projects in the country, and, and the design themselves was very, uh, was very rotted by, by architects. And the, the, um, let's see, the, as, as what, and what was so special about the windows was the elegant, the very slender, um, mullions, the steel windows, the steel casement windows. The windows that were replaced in a renovation in the nineteen eighties. But the, the, the development itself wasn't landmarked until it was, in two thousand and three, where a lot of the renovation from the eighties, which had, um, which had compromised a lot of the original design. What, what the architects brought to us was a, an aluminum, a design for aluminum windows that replicated a lot of the design elements of the original design. But, but committee found that the, uh, that the, the draw, that the, in, in the design package, the drawings for the windows were incomplete, and the questions about whether, how closely, um, they did replicate the original design. They also were made, were in aluminum and not steel, were very specific questions about the design itself. And also, questions about, um, whether or not they had screens, the architects. The architects, we didn't have a good answer. Asked about child safety, and there were lots of other questions that, uh, that they, they were answered in a way that was satisfactory to the committee, but, um, but the fact that, but the window design itself was not one that the committee, we didn't feel like there was enough information, and, um, and, but really what the problem that the committee had was that, was that we learned that the, there hadn't been adequate outreach to the tenants of the buildings. And so what we decided was not to vote on it, but to hold off, um, and ask the, ask the architects to come back with the window design to the next landmark, land use, um, meeting, and also ask the, the project manager and the people involved in the project to come either to the board or the housing committee and explain more about the, the whole. And that's it.
Thank you, Trina. Question? Yes?
Uh, to what extent, can you hear me? I'm sorry, Marty Needle.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, to what extent did they, have they consulted with it, with the tenants at all?
Well, they said because of COVID, it's been very difficult, they did send to, um, to the board after, after we had met, they sent a, a copy of what had been sent to all the tenants, and that, I don't know, was that shared with the whole board, Marie, or was that just sent with the landmarks committee, land use committee?
That was, uh, sent to the committee.
Okay, maybe we can share that with the whole board.
Is the Williamsburg housing going through a pact or red transition?
No.
I don't think so. Let me ask, uh, um, one is, obviously, the housing authority's not telling you the truth, because there have been all kinds of meetings with tenants and the housing authority, when they want to meet, they know how to do it, and that's not acceptable, but could we, from the, the point of view of your committee, uh, I don't know if there is, is there a sign in front of Williamsburg houses that this was the first, uh, public housing and et cetera, et cetera, about the, uh, its heritage? And it seems to me that that's a pretty important thing to have noted, uh, in a very clear way on the grounds of Williamsburg houses. Like, seeing them show this public housing at the Brooklyn Museum and other things, but I don't think we've made a whole fuss about it locally.
I don't know if there is a, it should be.
Yeah, but it should be outside and very visible to the whole community, that this is, you just read, was beautiful, about what it is. We should have asked them to put it up, they have mu- enough money, no matter what they say, and they can do it, but there's the tenants to be invited, the tenant president, to help that next committee you have, to bring allegation, as discussed.
Hey, Madam Chair, can we recognize this Julia?
Boys, um, Trina? Let me just, I just want to re- say that, that tenant's, uh, president was invited to the next committee meeting, she has not responded yet.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Julie.
I don't have a question, but I, I'm sorry for the echo, people. I attended the Williamsburg meeting, and the residents were not informed about these windows. Um, it was like, it went over them, they talked about everything else, but the design of the windows. Um, I questioned that, and they stated because, um, something with land, not land use, land something, doesn't give them permission to share that information with the residents. So I had an issue with that, and they said they're coming back to land use, and discuss it with them, and, because they want a letter from the board, and it was a lot of things that the residents are not aware about. Not knocking the, the president, but she was not on that call, she was not at that meeting, they're having a hard time meeting with her. So, I don't know where to move from there, and how to reach the residents on, in regards to this issue.
It's not just the windows, it's a whole renovation.
It's a whole lot of stuff, they're not aware of. They are not aware of.
St. Nicholas led the last renovation.
Very easy to have a, a town hall meeting at, at IS forty-nine, which is right in the middle of Williamsburg houses. So, I've done many, many times, so why they don't do that is, is shocking.
It also, St. Nicholas did the last renovation, so I think to talk to Frank Lane, all them, they were involved with Williamsburg houses for years on renovations. They got on their board of St. Nicholas Alliance, there are leaders from Williamsburg houses that are on the board.
Can I make some additional comments, uh, please?
Who are committing the application, NYCHA?
Can I make some additional comments?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Santa.
Sorry, no, no, I want to say about, uh, I understand it's a, it's a landmark application, of course, you know, uh, as a committee, uh, that's what we analyze in the window, but because it may be resident and people lives there, you know, and we care also about that, as Trina has mentioned, uh, something very important, the moment we change window, and probably the window were there before, they're even not appropriate, you know, the beauty is that this is. that this is a national, nationally recognized landmark. So the, the fact it was landmarked in 2003, there is a reason. So despite the fact that there are, those are public housing and budget may be restricted, those houses deserve the same treatment historically in terms of what kind of replacement window they get than any other building will get. But what can change there, and I believe the resident of this building needs to be aware, and so it's an open conversation, is the feature that come with the window. Something, for example, something wasn't mentioned there, I mentioned the night, is screen. They didn't even contemplate the idea of having window screen in a place where we are infested with mosquitoes. How can you imagine that somebody can never open the window? One. Of course, they've, they keep installing some sleeve for the air conditioning because many of the tenants, they pay for their own air conditioning. This is a critical issue because change that design. But I think what it is more important, that those window are casement window and they're fine, but there is a rule in New York City that the window cannot be open more than four inches. Now, at a time where we talk about energy efficiency, not being able to use the window in terms of opening them entirely, you can only crack them for four inches, it means that you have to use air conditioning all the time, even when it's not necessary to use air conditioning. And what about when there is a, a power outage? People suffocate in entire this apartment. And the big organization have been trying to advocate, and I would say this year, because this will come back again, but people need to be aware, you may be able to opt and have an option because they put a lock on the cranking system, they open the casement window, but you have no children and you have no issue.
We can talk about this at the committee.
Okay. I was trying to add something publicly, people to be aware that the window is feature that may impact their quality of life.
I think it's very important, Sante, very important.
Very important.
Thank you.
Do you think the committee should write a letter to?
I think it's important to note, I can say something. I think it's important to note.
One person speak at a time, please.
I'm sorry. I think, I, I think it's important to note a couple of things. One thing is that the Williamsburg houses is the second oldest project in the United States. But the other thing is that a lot of, a lot of the issues are access, how they come in, what the process would be, not just the physical thing, but how they're going to do this because there's huge amounts, I know in other developments, that there's been problems in terms of non consultation, non arrangements made with the tenants in terms of access and working it out, and it's extremely difficult very often for people. And very often because they're, you know, because they're minority people and they're low income people, it's, it's, it's forgotten, you know, it's ignored. And I think that, that's, it has to be a big fight because it, it, these things go on very often without consultation and concern about the tenants.
Glad you brought up that, though. Very glad.
I would like to, Mr. Gross, I would like to add something. Question is, from the windows, is leaking the broken windows? You have to find out the condition of the windows. If it's raining or, or when, we have a winter storm, high wind. If, if the, if the window is not secure or old, then the, the question is, is the resident a sufferer? That's the main question, what we should focus. Number one, is tenants a sufferer, sufferer? Do you need to leave the window? And that, how to communicate with tenants? Now, I want to know also, is NYCHA, was the request came from NYCHA or from a contract?
You know, there's a, there's a note in the text from Evelyn and Cruz that, I don't know if everyone can read it, maybe should I read it out loud because I think it's important? It says, Williamsburg houses is, is going through an RAD PACT process. Numerous meetings were held in 2019 at the Williamsburg Community Center. A management firm and local provider, Saint Nick's, has been selected. Our office is monitoring this process. The selected management group has been visiting units and looking to close on this project spring, summer. Our office, Evelyn Cruz's office, is meeting with the new property manager to discuss. But the 19 unfortunately has disrupted the project, but the Congresswoman remains vigilant of the NYCHA agreement. Developments will be transitioning from public housing to section eight developments. We have been advocating to protect all the residents. I would be happy to share more info on this program. That's a lot more information that was brought to us by the architect and the management person.
There's a lot of questions about RAD, by the way. That's another whole thing. Really bad. And any of this is on public housing stuff.
Thank you for the information, Evelyn. Send it to the office and we'll get it out to the board members. Is there any other questions? Trina does that?
I just want to delve deep. I just want to encourage people who are interested in this to come to our next land use meeting because we can then confront them with more specifics. But we were very concerned about the lack of, they haven't reached out to the tenants. Can I just?
Is this a joint meeting with housing?
May I speak?
I was trying to get her information. She just gave out. That's all.
Can we ask Evelyn?
Madam Chair, this is Maria Vieira.
Yes.
So if I, if I may add that at the end of that meeting, we did discuss bringing this to Rabbi Niederman to, to gauge whether or not it would be useful to have a meeting with the tenants, the, the NYCHA tenants of the Williamsburg houses, being that the rabbi chairs, the housing committee, this would probably be the best way to, to, to assess whether or not, how informed the tenants of the Williamsburg houses are of all of these changes, which I, I presume they're informed because, you know, NYCHA does do some sort of, provide some sort of information, especially when they're doing the RAD. But how happy are they with this process? How much do they know? How involved are they? And, and how much information is actually being provided? So Rabbi, if, if you, if you please, if you're willing to, to call that meeting. Thank you.
So I'm still asking, can we have all three committees have a joint meeting on this? From the, the beginning, we have the preservation to the housing to the ULP. It should be a joint meeting. And with all the people and with RAD because RAD is another whole thing.
Evelyn, is this a pact on RAD development?
Whatever it is, there's problems on both sides, Joel.
Yeah. We went, we went a couple of months, we went to the pact. Yeah. I know you did.
So, Trina, I don't know, you know, and I don't know what other people want. Maybe we should invite Saint Nick's since Evelyn is saying that Saint Nick's, Saint Nick's was chosen as the local provider, which means they're going to be providing the social services on site. So remember that the, the, right now, at our next meeting, at our February meeting, we will again be reevaluating the windows. And that's the extent of what they're coming to us for. And, but I think that it would be wonderful if Rabbi Niederman and perhaps other people from the housing committee would come and if Saint Nick's would come, that would be, that would be excellent. And anyone who wants to come. Now, again, we are at this point only discussing those windows, but we were very concerned that they, well, we were concerned about some of the design and we had our own concerns, but we were also concerned about the fact that they hadn't even asked tenants if they wanted to have window screens. And it, we didn't think they were making any kind of a good faith effort to reach out to the tenants at all.
And this is why I'm saying if all three committees do a joint meeting, we can go beyond windows. We can talk about windows, but we can talk about the preservation and we can talk about RAD and what RAD is doing.
So Jan, that's fine, but we have to deal with the windows. And if the other committees could. Someone should read what Evelyn is putting in the chat.
Del, Evelyn's the panelist. Del, Jan, Jan, I think that's a housing committee. I think Rabbi Niederman should call a meeting.
Madam Chair?
Niederman should call a housing, yes.
Madam Chair, we've brought Evelyn Cruz into the meeting.
Okay. Hi, everyone. How's everyone? This is entertaining to listen to all this discourse about Williamsburg houses. I first, I just want to thank all of you for your, you know, your services past year and I hope you all had a good holiday. Personally, for me, it's been very challenging, you know. I don't know if you know, I lost both my parents last year. So I'm just trying to get my feet back on the ground in the community. And so, you know, now I'm just going to dig into work. That's what I have to say.
How's Congresswoman doing, by the way, after her event?
She is in Washington tonight. They are, are starting to vote on, you know, the invoking of the 25th Amendment. We know Pence is not going to stand for it, but this is a process we must go through. They're literally standing on a crime scene. I mean, you know what's happened. And every, every hour, we're getting more footage, more video footage of what really happened on the interior of the halls of Congress. And so, you know, we know that with the incoming president, there is going to be severe, you know, punishment and further arrests. I think you heard today, they arrested about 70, have already been charged out of the 170 that were arrested and more to follow. And so it's going to be a new day on the Capitol grounds. You know, they're going to have metal detectors. So now when you're busy, you got to go through metal detectors. There are Congress members that are talking about bringing their own weapons to come to work, which is a little, you know, daunting. It's a little scary. But in spite of that, the Congresswoman has been busy, you know, working. She introduced two bills just last week, which was the public housing bill. We're hopeful that with this new administration, we can all fight to get public dollars for, you know, public housing developments. And she's asking for $70 billion, of which about 32 or 35 billion could be dedicated to New York City. So that's one of the key things. And the other piece is the COVID funding. I believe her bill is for, I, I forgot the number, several millions of dollars or billions for COVID to bring resources to our local nonprofit organizations and healthcare providers to help with the, the rollout, mental health and social service component. So we're thinking that's going to go through smoothly. And so, you know, that's what she's doing now. But, but one of the key things we've been monitoring is this whole issue about RAD impact. You know, the member is not a fan of RAD impact. This is a program that was approved and passed through the, you know, President Obama's administration. And, and what it does is transitions public housing properties, like NYCHA developments, into a section eight kind of program. So, and the reason why is this, when you are in, you know, living in public housing, every tenant is paying 30% of their income goes to the rent. There is no other subsidy. With section eight, it federalizes the development. So the tenant will continue to pay 30% of their income, but now the management will be able to get a federal subsidy for the unit. So let's say the unit is worth $1,000 and the tenant only pays $200, then the federal government will pay the, the management company the $800 in subsidy, so to speak. And the reason why this is being done is because NYCHA developments cannot be, cannot refinance. So it takes an outside, a private, you know, nonprofit, private entity to do that. And that's what's happened here with most of the RADS throughout New York City. So in spite of our efforts, you know, to kind of curb the RAD, you know, the ratting of public housing, we, you know, it has not been successful because there has not been sufficient monies allocated to public housing and families are really living in bad, you know, deteriorating conditions, including Williamsburg houses. And so this is what's happening. I think Mr. Gross is on the board and, and he can share, you know, I guess at one of the meetings, you know, for two years, the agonizing, you know, numbers of meetings and information and, and, you know, and Berry Street House is the same thing. They have completed their processes, basically. They've gotten new boilers, they've installed the piping to stop the sewage backup into their buildings. I toured numerous apartments, they've gotten new kitchens, you know, new, new kitchen cabinets, new bathrooms, new roofs. And so, you know, it, it's hard to say, but many of the tenants, you know, are happy that they have a decent unit now and others, you know, are still complaining about the kind of contractors that are sent to these developments. And that's something that we continue to monitor. And so that's kind of it in a nut, you know, in a nutshell. Williamsburg houses is unique because it is a landmark property since 2003. And the other thing is that it's also under the federal monitor because of the lead situation at Williamsburg houses. So they have to, the new property manager also has to remediate the lead issues throughout the development. And they've been testing for lead for about a year and a half now at the development. So they have visited, I think, over, I think, over 1,000 units from our report early this year or mid this year of units that they tested with children, you know, any unit that had miners in it, they've tested. So they have to report to the federal monitor and whoever assumes the, the management has to remediate it. So remediation alone is millions of dollars. So I know that I sent the press release and I just sent you guys the press release as well, when they announced the, the new property managers, it's Wave Crest Property Management. They have a few buildings in Manhattan, they have some in the Rockaway, in the Rockaways. They did the first conversion in the Rockaways. And so, like I said, you know, the Congresswoman, this is something that NYCHA did agree to. We were all in conversations. I know Assemblywoman Davila was at many of those town hall meetings at the Williamsburg Community Center, as was I. I think Tommy Torres attended a few of them, if I recall. But it's not enough. It's not enough because I know that this is very complicated. Residents, you know, are all concerned, are they going to be relocated? Are they going to be kicked out? And that's why we're all, you know, that should not happen. It is not part of the plan. And we're going to keep our eye on the price, making sure that these tenants stay in place. And I think, you know, that, that's where it's headed, unfortunately, you know, unless someone can come up with 35, you know, billion dollars or, you know, I think NYCHA, Williamsburg houses alone needs over $100 million. If that can happen, then, you know, it shouldn't be ratified. But, but it is happening. Like I said, we are not a fan of any of this transition, but we are also seeing, you know, and communicating with tenants, like some at Jonathan Williams, like, you know, other developments in our district, that they are at least happy that they're getting heat, you know, repairs are being made. And unfortunately, we know what's happened with NYCHA. So, so that's it in a nutshell.
Isn't there a new, Evelyn, isn't there a new blueprint going through Albany that people are?
We're not even supporting that. So like I said, you know, we, that is happening, yes. I think that was, I think they tabled that. I could be wrong. I, I know that there was a lot of opposition to that in Albany by, you know, community activists, public housing residents.
But the leaders of public housing are not in favor of RAD?
Right.
So there's a big fight going on. Everybody should know that. There is a citywide organization of public housing that people can talk to. We don't decide by ourselves in Williamsburg.
Right. That is correct. That is correct, Jan. And, and, you know, we don't decide that either, right? The tenant associations and the residents, you know, have been reached out to and we continue to reach out to them. And I know that Councilman Ray also has also been, you know, talking to them and met with them a year ago and, and we were demanding, you know, because what happens with these property agents, they come and they bring their own entities, like their own CBOs and, you know, outsiders that don't know our community. And so, you know, we were like, no, it's got to be local, it's got to be job training, there got to be job hires. So there is a criteria that they need to meet. But I do, you know, like I said, the mayor, NYCHA has already, the new chairman, they've engaged in this process and they see that, you know, until they get the billions of dollars from Washington or the state or the city of New York, that this is the path they're taking. And the chairman, you know, from our conversation with the member and him, you know, he's, he would rather not do that. But there, you know, the state level, remember, at the state level, you know, there were several, there were over 21 developments that were basically. several, there were over twenty-one developments that were basically orphaned, right? That didn't get one cent from the state. And so they were borrowing funding from all these other federal developments to Band-Aid problems. And so, you know, at the end of the day, you know, the, the, you know, Washington started chipping away at public housing funding, and then no line items coming in from the state for it, and then the city doing what they can, you know, it, there just wasn't enough over the past, you know, I would say maybe eight years, ten years that we've been fighting this front.
But you know the corruption too. Let's get to the corruption of the housing authority.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, the Congresswoman, you know, uh, held field hearings on the corruption part, that's the least of it. But the point is that, you know, when I visit a unit, especially, you know, i- in some of our developments, the conditions are horrible. And, and, you know, and the work is not being done, and so where do we find the money? So that, that's the debate that we have right now. But, um, but that's where we're at. I guess Mr. Gross has become an expert as Rabbi Needham, because Rabbi, I know Rabbi Needham gets the complaints, and Mr. Gross hears it from his tenants, uh, and independents, and, um, and I, we can, you know, we can point to the positive things about it, the negative sides. But the key thing is that we all have to be vigilant in making sure that these tenants are, you know, protected, that they stay in place, and that they, they're gonna get renovations that be done, you know, in, you know, respectfully and decently. So this is what we know. I'm gonna share the press release that the mayor put out on this project. Uh, I'm surprised you guys didn't know this, but I will gladly share it because it was put out February of twenty twenty. Uh, and so it's been an ongoing project for about, I think, two years. So my understanding is that they're gonna be going into closing soon. Because of COVID, it got delayed. We're still waiting for the PNA report, uh, which is the physical needs assessment, which they submitted, and it reports what are the needs of the buildings. Uh, and then they have to comply with the federal monitor, uh, legal, what do you call it, the legal, the, um, the monitor's ruling on, um, oh my God, on getting rid of the lead. So that, that's one of the things. Mm-hmm. So I hope, I hope, too much or helpful, one or the other.
Thank, thank, thank you so much, Evelyn. And if you can get that information to the office, and we can get it out to the other board members. And, uh, and Rabbi Needham, thank you so much. Rabbi Needham, you need to call a meeting with Housing and Public Housing Committee to start talking about this issue. So when the money do come through, you'll know what you want to do.
Thank you, Evelyn.
Evelyn, I would like to, I would like to comment, um, just share information. As right now, in the process, our development went through, again, after the conversion with the new management, a new screening for lead. We find around fifty apartments positive with lead, included mine apartment. And the last couple years, I know Nitra was doing testing, we all know, no lead in Jonathan Williams Plaza, but I was shocked there, our development has, right now, confirmed around fifty, forty-eight or fifty cases, lead positive cases. And they have right now planned how to deal with it, and they jumping on it in the next week on it, and building by building to deal with the lead. And regarding the mold issue, the federal monitor is working on mold and lead. Regarding the mold issue, so what we was doing overhead, we was going to the source why we have mold in apartments. One leaks from the roof, leaks from windows, so this was changed. Then they went to the piping, leaks from piping from waste lines, and they changing multiple pipes, changing the hearing system pipes of the roof, where we have a lot of heat. Number three is the ventilation system in the bathroom. Our ventilation system is also a good area, the reason is that the ventilation system is not working, is full of dust. Cleaning them out, changing the ventilation system that's moving drugs, using local plants on mold, it's a mouth. And that is what we see from the pact, curing the mold in our development, one of the basements. Um, Evelyn, I would like to ask you about regarding the windows, if, um, you have any knowledge, knowledge of the condition for the windows in, in that development?
I thank, I thank Evelyn, it's gone. Uh, Trina, does that conclude your part, your, uh, committee report?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Next up, committee report is Economic Development Committee, Toby.
Yes, how are you?
I'm good, thank you, yourself?
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
We really need what is a very unified, well thought committee, and we appreciate your guidance. So, um, you know, I'm gonna be brief because it's getting very late, but we had a, a number of people from the EDC, the Economic Development Corporation, speaking about a range of programs. I know that today I saw some emails sent out with announcements, some of what they told us about just getting started. There was a five hundred dollar grants available for businesses, um, and there's also a lot of resources, both people looking to get online, uh, freelancers and digital agencies that are donating their services, a- and also a partnership with the, with the American Association of Architects to help restaurants that are looking to design code compliant spaces. So I would encourage everybody to report, and some of these emails were sent around by, by the community board to distribute it to businesses and business owners they know, because there are a lot of resources, both financial and otherwise, even before the federal money. This is a lot of money that's already been allocated with partners for all kinds of support services. We also had a, whoever's making noise, please define. Uh, we had a, a member of the community, Joseph Franz, speak about different tips for tenants in terms of dealing with landlords on commercial leases. Um, and he's offered his services if anybody wants to ask specific questions. Uh, and then we had another member of the community, Jay Solly from Sustainable United Neighborhood, um, who's worked very closely with all the elected officials, um, in the community through a space he actually has in, on my building at two fifteen Moore Street, um, reporting on ongoing efforts. So everybody should be aware that there were about two hundred and fifty thousand meals given out, um, through the building, right across the Bushwick Houses. Um, and right now, that program ended, but they continue to do, uh, there were things for Thanksgiving, before Christmas, that involved distribution of food and various, you know, uncooked food, and that, those efforts continue. So I think the email address was left, but also for anybody that's aware of members of the community, um, that are struggling with, um, lack of employment and dealing with, um, you know, you know, food issues, we're continuing to work together to try to bring different resources to the community, specifically in, you know, through the, the efforts at the, near, at our building near Bushwick Houses. Um, and I would also ask that, who's only attended the committee meeting, was attended by myself and Karen Yevas, um, everyone else is asked to please participate in our committee. Um, and also, if they're members of the community that are aware of resources for, um, individuals that relate to employment opportunities, um, and also resources at the city, state, and federal level for local small businesses, if they could bring it to our attention so we could help spread the word, um, and get more information as these programs come through. That's it for my.
Thank you so much, Toby, for all that information.
Can we commend that report? That was an excellent report, Toby. I did read it, even if I wasn't there, it was really helpful, and it would be good if we could get some of our small businesses to join your committee. It was really good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that. And again, I like, uh, reiterating, if anybody has ideas or are aware of either city, state programs or, or nonprofits that are bringing resources related to unemployment or, or resources for small businesses, feel free to communicate with us, and please come and join us and participate in these meetings. There's a lot of things we can do together as a community to help both employees, employers, and local small businesses.
Thank you.
Toby.
Yeah, Alice, I just wanna say thank you to Toby. It was a, a really well-run meeting, and she did a great job, and I wish there was more committee members, so please, um, join, this is important, you know, economic development, our businesses, small businesses, it's really important that everybody attends and gets the word out. And thank you, Toby. Again, it was very, very welcome.
And thank you, Karen, for always being there. We need more people to participate.
Toby.
Thank you. I encourage all, I encourage all members of that committee to go to these meetings because the times that we're in now, we need all the reso- resources we can get. So the more we come together with this committee and try to get resources in, in the community, the better off we'll be.
Yeah, I saw your question, we're gonna, we're working on the dates, I'm gonna let everybody know what the dates are for the next meetings, because there's so much work we need to do together. And I see Tommy was asking a question, sure.
Yeah, no, I just wanna say thank you, Toby. I know, I know the work that's coming out of your building at, uh, two fifteen, uh, more. So thank you for, for the thousands of meals that have been coming out of your place, uh, with your organization, uh, Sustainable United Neighbors. I've been working with them through the holidays, through all this pandemic, so thank you, Toby, and, and Jay over there, thank you.
Anybody on that, just one last point, if anybody is interested in getting involved, we're constantly doing food drives, where we're getting donations from farmers and others. You can reach out to me or to Jay. Um, and he's also run programs to help clean up in the neighborhood, and Tommy was part of, we're doing game night now, socially distanced with masks, people really are looking for ways to connect with the community. But there's a lot of activity going on there, and we'd love to have everybody get involved.
Thank you so much, Toby. Sound, sound like you're doing an outstanding job for the community. I really appreciate it. And also, I know somebody asked you about your next meeting date. I know we sent out a notice last week, we're asking all the committees to get their dates in for the, for the, for the year, so we have to know when you're having a meeting. So if you can get that information to the office, we would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on the, on, is, uh, transportation, Eric?
Thank you, Chair Fuller. Uh, good evening, everybody, Happy New Year. Um, so we had a, a rather long meeting, and I'll try to condense it as best I can, given the hour. Um, we were able to get, um, the commanders of the nine-four and the nine-oh, um, representatives from the fire department, uh, and sanitation, uh, as well as DOT, to talk about open streets, and how, um, how they've been dealing with open streets, um, what their experience has been working with the, um, the, uh, the coalition, um, that is, uh, come together to maintain, um, uh, the barricades. Um, a lot of the information was not, uh, new, um, that, that there were a lot of complaints, uh, more so in the nine-four than in the nine-oh. Um, the nine-oh doesn't have as many open streets as nine-four does, so they, um, they've been able to replace broken barricades, um, where they happen, uh, on a more regular basis. Um, haven't had really many, um, three-one-one complaints from residents, um, south of Metropolitan Avenue, um, or at least haven't, um, since, uh, since this, the, the summer. Um, complaints are down now, uh, in the nine-four, um, uh, but they are still, um, getting complaints. Um, I'm just trying to, to run through this, uh, uh, fire department, um, unfortunately, uh, the community fairs officer was there, but the, um, the ca- the captain, um, could not get on mic, so we really couldn't have, um, a direct discussion with him. Um, but, uh, we'll try to reach out to Captain Gannon and, um, get some more information on him. But, um, there wasn't any, um, nothing really stuck out, um, so far, um, there either haven't been enough calls, uh, that, uh, are on an open street or, or, um, or any EMS calls that, uh, have been a problem with the, the barricades actually causing a, a life-threatening condition, but we're gonna keep, uh, talking to the fire department and EMS to, to make sure that that's not a problem. There have been some issues, but typically, uh, there was not, uh, from the community fairs office anyway. Um, they have seen problems citywide in other areas, but not, not in our, not in our district. Um, there have been a lot of complaints about litter, um, from, on the open streets, um, and, uh, we did get a, uh, commitment from the, um, community fairs sanitation, uh, to do a ride-along, uh, with the, um, mechanical brush, uh, trucks, um, on a couple different streets, Berry for sure, um, uh, probably Russell, probably West Street, and we're gonna, uh, take a look at what the issues are, um, with, uh, cleaning the, uh, the street portion. Obviously, businesses and, and landlords are responsible for cleaning eighteen inches out into their curb, um, and there's been a, because of COVID, with alternate side being so wacky, um, it's been hard for them, and people are kinda lax about moving their cars even when they need to, and there's, tickets are down, um, also for, uh, alternate side, uh, cleaning. So we're gonna follow up with, uh, with them as well, uh, to see how, uh, how they're dealing with it, and, um, just wanted to make them aware that there are a number of complaints, um, about litter, particularly over the spring and summer, but, um, but they're continuing. Um, and, uh, there was some discussion about, um, there were, there was a long discussion, this was like a two-hour discussion, so I'm just really kinda hitting the points that will be followed up on. Um, there's been some concerns about speeding, unfortunately, the police department can't write, uh, for, um, under tw- under twenty-five miles an hour, even though it's a five-mile suggested speed limit, uh, for the open streets, um. Uh, there was some, uh, criticism of DOT, um, for their survey, both, um, in that they have, and I'm gonna put it in the chat for everyone, um, the, the survey links, they're now in, um, they just came out in Polish and Spanish, which was a concern of the committee, uh, and the, uh, the other, um, uh, the English survey has been out. There's some concerns that it's a little skewed towards pro-open streets. Um, there's, uh, I wasn't able to submit mine, I tried twice, even after the call, and it did not go through, so there's some technical issues, um, with that survey. Um, but I will be putting it in the comments so that you, so that people can, and please distribute it to those that you know that do live on an open street or, or near it, or have an issue with it one way or the other. Um, and I'll do that now. So, um, I, I think the biggest takeaway, um, is that, um, uh, we're gonna follow up with, uh, the nine-four and the nine-oh for specifics on what kind of complaints came in, and then we're gonna, and fire department as well, and sanitation, and then we're gonna work with them over the next couple meetings to kind of, um, uh, find out what the, what the biggest complaints are. Obviously, there's a lot of pro-open streets folks that are turning up for the meetings, and we expect that, and they do have a coalition. Um, but we wanna make sure if this coalition is really gonna do the work to fill in the gaps for all these agencies, um, that it's really a coordinated, uh, effort, and that the people that are upset with the open streets are, are at least satisfied that their concerns are being addressed, and that the people that love the open streets get to enjoy them as they are designed. But we all know that this was just thrown at DOT by, by the city, um, not to give them pass, really, but, you know, it's, uh, it was not ideal, it was thrown at the last minute to address COVID, and now we're, um, as one of the, um, attendees said, you know, break first and then, and then fix, and that's kind of, uh, what we're, what we're dealing with now. Um, so we will be following up with all the agencies to get more information, and at the next meeting, um, Captain Fahey at the nine-four, and Captain Vasquez echoed this a little bit, um, they need direction from us, um, as with, as to like, how we wanna like, go forward and, and work together to get this done. So that's probably gonna be the focus of the next open streets meeting, at the February Transportation Committee meeting. Um, I'm really glossing over a lot, it was a long conversation, so the, the report reads like, uh, um, like a transcript, um, so it's line, it's line by line, so it's a pretty quick read, so I'll ask anybody that's concerned about it to really go through, get back to me and, or any committee member about issues that they wanna bring up at the next meeting on open streets. Um, I think, I think that pretty much covers open streets. We went on to talk about safety conditions at, uh, Wythe and, um, Williamsburg Street, East and West. Um, we did learn from Captain Vasquez that he has put in a request for a bike light, a bike stoplight, um, as well as some additional, uh, striping and paint, uh, to go down, and also looking, um, to, to solve the problem of motors cannot see cyclists coming out of that tunnel, um, the, the overpass. And so he's trying to address those problems. Um, he is writing, um, tickets at that location, but it's not, for whatever reason, in his top ten of it's not, for whatever reason, in his top ten of, of priority intersections. It's probably eleven or twelve, not to diminish their concern for it. But he is gonna look at his, his deployment and see if he can make it more of a priority for, for his patrols. So we were grateful to hear that. We're gonna also follow up with DOT to see if they have actually are processing his request, where that is. And we'll get more information on that for the next, for the next meeting. There was some talk about buses parking in the, in the bike lanes and using it as a bus stop. Captain said he would look into that. It is not legal. We got that right from DOT, that it is not legal to do that. So that's a problem that really does need to be addressed by enforcement. In the meantime, hoping to get Jersey barriers or some other impediment, so that the buses won't be able to do that. But that's more of a process. But we're gonna follow up with DOT to see if that can happen sooner than later. Let's see. I think that was, basically, the shift of that is that we're gonna keep looking at this issue, at this intersection. DOT is going to do another reevaluation of the, of the area, based on prior meetings that you've all sat through and heard me talk about. But they don't have a date for when that next iteration will be ready. And this would, and if I understood Rhonda correctly, that this will deal with the actual issues at this intersection, rather than the exit off to BQ and all the other ancillary streets that we all know are a problem down there. Then we talked about bike safety. Both captains, bless them for staying the whole three hours, stayed and said, you know, the ticket, writing tickets are down, but they are writing more for motorists. The, the summonses that they're writing for bikes are typically riding the wrong way, up a street, running lights. And, you know, the, the takeaway for me, and I think some of the others, is that, and something that we've said a million times, is that education is key, but then also, you know, design, infrastructure design needs to be how we fix those cyclists that are, for whatever reason, not obeying the same rules of the road that the motorists need to follow. One of the, the director of, or not the director, the rep for transportation alternatives mentioned, there's a Senate Bill nine oh five going up in the Senate right now. I don't have that link readily available. So it's to allow cyclists to proceed at a yield at a stop sign, and after a yield at a stop sign, and then to make a full stop and stay at a red light. So that legislation is moving through the state senate right now. If I can find it before the end of the meeting, or if Will or Steve has, has that, to put it in the chat, we'll do that. And then there was no old business, new business. Ryan brought up that there was another fatality at the intersection of Graham and Metropolitan. A cyclist, a motorcyclist was fatally injured around Christmas. This is the second accident within, I think, two years. So that's gonna be an agenda item on the February committee. We'll be talking to DOT about what can be done to improve safety at that intersection, which we all know is treacherous. Or at least, most of us know it's treacherous. I think it's treacherous. Okay. And then, that, that's it, in a nutshell. It's, it's not a long read. I'll, I'll encourage everybody to read the report. And I'll be putting the links for the, for the surveys, the open street surveys, in the chats. And if anybody has any questions, or if any, if, or if any committee members want to amend what, what I said.
Eric, I have a question.
Yes, Doug.
Is there any, are there any issues with the motorized bicycles riding in the, in the bike lanes?
I, I asked, I asked the commanders about, is, if there was a, you know, a difference between the tickets they're writing for delivery vehicles, which are the majority of the e-bikes, versus city bike, and just our usual, regular residential cyclists. I don't know how you put that. He will, that's one of the things that he's gonna get back to us on, that I've asked for a breakdown, and if they even make that distinction. He wasn't sure. But it's, it's my feeling, I guess, that, and, you know, I work in food, and, you know, we did, we work with seamless drivers and stuff like that. They are racing to get, I'm sorry, Metro and Driggs, not Metro and Graham, sorry, Metro and Driggs, the, the accident with the motorcycle. You know, they are racing, they're under so much pressure to get these deliveries through. And, you know, it might be something where we have to sit down with, you know, restaurant, restaurant association, or something like that, to like, take the pressure. I don't, I don't know what to do. But it, it feels like the e-bikes are more likely to run a red, or like, whatever. I mean, that's just anecdotal. I can't really say for sure. And the captain could not say for sure. So hopefully, Doug, we can suss that out and, and figure that out.
Okay, thanks. I just wondered how, if it's a safety problem for, for the, for, you know, the regular bike, bike riders, and I don't know.
Sure. And this is something that Tom has, Tom has brought up from the inception of the e-bikes. And I agree, they run fast, you can't hear them, you know. So it is an issue.
Thanks.
Eric, you know, just to be aware, that in Europe, we have a, a different definition of, in terms of speed. So does electric bike go a little bit too fast? I use a city bike, the electric assistant. It is not that fast. In comparison, you are against racing a motorcycle with one of these. And I believe that's the issue. Maybe because there is this issue of encroachment in New York City, everything absent, happened in the same place, right? The delivery, the truck, the bike, the regular bicycle, the pedestrian, and now even the close street. It's a lot. And, and maybe additional compromise that to come into the picture. But I have to say.
Which is like, really the, the thing.
But, and also, and I close it here, I try myself to make, give some input. I wasn't able, the system didn't work, you know. But a lot of the residents may have like, non-necessary positive comments. We have an issue of outreach from the DOT. You know, I wasn't able to attend your meeting, but I believe there is also something not very democratic that is happening. It's a beautiful idea. I'm European, I grew up in, you know, you can go in Rome, in Paris, but it's a different contest in New York City, because when you have a fifty-story tower with two thousand people, you have other issue of traffic. So open street is a beautiful concept, but it needs to be looked urbanistically deeply. It's too superficial. That's all. Maybe there is a different place, we can talk more about this. But that's all.
Sure. And, you know, like I said, this is gonna be a continuing issue into the spring on the agenda for the Transportation Committee. I just want to address Austin in the comments. I'm not trying to make a distinction to penalize necessarily, you know, a delivery cyclist versus a, I don't know what, what, you know, cyclists that are just going to work, commuters, et cetera. But I think if there is an issue with e-bikes because of their specific physical design, and if the operators are under a particular pressure, then, you know, maybe that's something that we can fix, you know, and, and just to make it safe for them, right? So, I mean, that's the ultimate goal, is to keep it safe for all road users. And that includes delivery cyclists. I'm not, look, they kept us alive over the summer delivering our, our food. I love those guys. But
Yeah.
They're, they're under pressure. So.
Absolutely.
And I, I'm sorry, I'm trying to cut and paste the links into the chat, and it's not working. So I don't know why not, but I'll try to fix that before the end of the meeting.
Eric, may I speak? My cam's not working, so I can't wave you down.
Yeah, sure, Ryan.
Um, so I, I wanted to bring up the, the motorcyclist that died at, at Metropolitan and Driggs. We spoke with the officer, and that was, the, this motorcyclist had, is in July. He had the green light, and he was going through, he was going on Driggs, and an SUV NYPD from the Ninetieth Precinct ran him over and killed him in response to a nine-one-one call. The nine-one-one call was a fake call about a man with a gun starting a fight at a restaurant, that one of our neighbors called in because they didn't like the noise at seven PM on a Friday. And this man paid because someone didn't like the fact, like, used nine-one-one as their own personal sort of, I don't even know, lameness. And when we spoke, the, the captain of the nine-four, because the accident happened in the nine-four, it was an officer in the nine oh, they can't really speak about the officers because the family is suing them. But I had said I really wanted to talk about fake nine-one-one calls, and sort of this thing. And she suggested she was willing to come, but she, we decided it wasn't a transportation thing, and probably something either for the full board or the public safety. But I definitely want to put this on everyone's radar, because it happened, and it sort of didn't really, people may have seen the memorial, it was up for a long time. But, you know, someone, he was a nurse, he was working during COVID, he was driving legally, and he got killed. Again, it's still undetermined if the NYPD was negligent, but our neighbor that called in the fake nine-one-one call was definitely malicious. And I definitely think it warrants a discussion, because the restaurant they called on is a black restaurant, that was new on the street, and a lot of people don't like the fact that black people were lining up outside. And this is a real deal thing, and it's so disgusting, I'm so enraged. And I really think that we, as a community board, have to not let it be swept under the rug.
Thanks, Ryan. And we will be taking it up. So either in our committee or in public safety, I'll, I'll talk to Tom about it. Anyone else?
Can I conclude your report, Eric?
Yes, we're looking at Tuesday the fifth, or Wednesday, I'm sorry, Tuesday the fourth or Wednesday the fifth for the next meeting. I've talked to Maria about it, and I'll have a, an update by the end of the week. Thank you all very much.
Okay, get your schedule in with your meetings for the year. Okay. Maria Vera, she didn't put in a report, but she want two minutes. Maria, you got two minutes.
Don't kill me, because I know it's after ten o'clock. I just want to say that the board received notification from OMB that there's going to be a reduction to the board budget because of COVID, so that we have to reduce spending for this fiscal year by three thousand six hundred dollars. I did request a meeting with the Board Budget Committee. Unfortunately, the notification came in on December twenty-second. When I received the notice, I sent out a request to meet, and of course, it was during the holidays. And, I mean, I tried, but I kind of knew that it was gonna be a, a failing attempt, because, you know, everybody was out, you know, doing whatever it is that people do during the holidays, and, and, you know, very well deserved. So I just want to bring it to the, the board's light, that there is this impending reduction of the budget, and there is a reduction of the fiscal year 2022 budget by eight thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars. So that one is a little, a lot more significant. Three thousand dollars is significant, but I really don't know how it's gonna impact the board in terms of if it's, if it's something that, that, that affects personnel expenses, or OTPS. But, but we shall, perhaps the Board Budget Committee can meet next month, and then I can come back with a real report to you guys, and not just something that I'm like, spousing because of an email that I read through a chain. So thank you so much. And, and that's it for me. I don't want to delay the, this meeting any further. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Maria. Parks, Parks Minute has written, public session. I think we got some speakers for the public session.
Okay. Let me see if this is still here. Jennifer? Jennifer Hagerty? Jennifer, can you hear?
Yes, I can hear. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're very low, though. Can you speak a little louder?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, about now, is that all right?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, community members and fellow attendees. So my name is Jennifer Hagerty. I'm a graduate student in public health at the Community Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy. I'd like to thank Community Board One for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. As both a student and servant of public health, I'm requesting your support to address a grave problem that lies at the intersection of food insecurity and the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, accessibility in our communities, especially during a pandemic. There's a twenty percent gap in SNAP uptake among eligible individuals in New York City as of late. Current and prospective SNAP consumers are systemically deterred from receiving the assistance they need by numerous obstacles, one being the immense difficulty they face in simply acquiring sufficient information throughout its processes. Improving the accessibility of basic pertinent information can help to ensure that fewer eligible individuals are obstructed in their pursuit of these vital benefits. A viable starting point, in the form of City Council Proposed Legislation Number Two Two One, would require all New York City Department of Social Services and Human Resources Administration facilities conspicuously post appropriate signage inside indicating standard application processing times and information regarding applicants' right to a fair theory, as well as how to request one. Although several nearby SNAP offices are currently closed due to the pandemic, it is crucial that this remain a high priority. Therefore, I urge you to please help promote the accessibility of basic information at SNAP offices by advocating for proposed Legislation Number Two Two One. Thanks all very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Next speaker, Marie.
The other gentleman, he doesn't appear anymore on the, on the call.
Okay. Do we have any electors that want to speak?
Yes, you do.
Thank you.
These are representatives from the elected officials.
Call the other speaker anyway, please. So it'll be in a minute.
Okay. Daniel Grossman? Daniel Grossman? He doesn't answer.
Call the electors, Marie?
Yes. Looking for Katie Brennan, but I don't see her. Katie? Katie Brennan? The next person is Mr. Serna, Ed Serna.
Good night, I guess, everybody. Happy New Year. I'm Ed Serna, Brooklyn Borough Director for the Mayor's Office of Community Affairs. Just wanted to quickly talk about vaccines. So yesterday, New York City administered over twenty-six thousand doses of the vaccine, and the city is on track to hitting its goal of one hundred and seventy-five thousand vaccinations. Today, the mayor announced that the new, a new mega site is coming online in Queens. It's gonna be twenty-four seven. It's at Citi Field, with an ability to administer anywhere between five thousand to seven thousand vaccinations a day. And, and the goal for sort of hitting that benchmark is gonna be January twenty-fifth. Just some other sites, mega sites that are running twenty-four seven, they include one-twenty-five Worth Street in Lower Manhattan. And for Brooklyn, we have Brooklyn Armor Terminal in, in Sunset Park. Today, the governor also announced, this is sort of like a state announcement, but it, it goes together. The governor announced that individuals aged sixty-five and older, and those folks with underlying conditions are now also eligible for the vaccine. So I would highly encourage folks to go online to see if you fall any, under any of those eligibility criteria, so you could go get vaccinated. Just some links, you can find your nearest location to you and make the appointment online, or through the phone, by visiting vaccinefinder.nyc.gov, or by calling eight seven seven VAXFORNEWYORKCITY, which is eight two nine four six nine two. If you are calling, because we all know some folks are not tech savvy. we all know some folks are not tech savvy, you can call the the phone system between 8:00 AM and 9:00 PM, seven days a week. But by the end of the week, we're going to have that system going 24 hours a day. Just, again, bear with me, some of the questions we received in in conjunction with the the vaccines is that there are some long wait times. But just to for some figures, when the benchmark was at folks 75 and older, like the one B that that opened up on Monday, we were talking about 660,000 people. And now that we've lowered that criterion to folks age 65 and over, you know, it it's going to increase the wait times even more. Our additional vaccines are coming online every day. And so you should check the city's website to make sure that you you have the, you know, most up to date information. Insofar as seniors and vaccines, DIFDA is working with NITSHA and other RCDL partners such as Hispanic Federation, Asian American Pacific Islander Federation, ARP, and JASA, and more, to make sure that we're making 60,000 calls to seniors every week to make sure that they're getting the vaccine. So it's been a long meeting. I'll conclude with, you know, there was an FBI warning that there's continued violence, that there is a threat of continued violence at state capitals. Right now, there are no specific threats directed at New York City. But if, you know, anything comes up, we'll be sure to let the public know. Other than that, congratulations to the officers who are elected today. I'm looking forward to working with everyone this this year, you know, the last year of the administration, and and take care. Thank you.
Now, Edwin, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Sonia Iglesias?
Mm-hmm.
I work for the for Senior Center, and we have training this morning with the Department for the Aging. What I cannot wrap my head around is that we are calling the older adults, 75 and older, and they were told that they make appointments. But I can't understand is they make appointments, but you have to wait four and five hours. Why give appointments, then? Time and appointment, I don't I don't get that part. And that's four or five hours online, these older adults.
You might catch the bus outside going that way.
That that is a good flag. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I don't have a ready on that. As I said just earlier, it's, you know, a lot of more people are going, the system is being built as, you know, we speak, sort of flying the airplane as we're building it. But I'm definitely going to take that feedback back to see, or at the very least, let the the Vaccine Command Center know that that this is what we're hearing on the ground, if there's something that can be done.
Thank you.
I think that.
Thank you. Does that complete the speakers, Marie?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Is there any old business? Is there any new business?
It's Trina. I've got a question. Are we going to be able to address the question that came about people that come to our meetings, our WebEx meetings, not being able to see other attendees, and also only being able to read the chat from from the panelists and not chat from other attendees? I know that you had you'd answered Katie Napeltarsky's question with an email saying that it wasn't possible in WebEx. But can we look to something else? I just think for transparency, it's really important to be able to do that.
I mean.
How the board have figured it out?
We spoke to the tech. We I've addressed it at this point, at the best I can. We're still looking for ways to make this look make this work better for everyone. And I would hope that Machelli will start his Outreach Committee, and that would be one of the things that they would work on.
Can I say if you want to?
At this at this point, at this point, I don't, at this point, Trina, I, you know, I don't have anything else to offer at this point.
Okay, well, I'm glad that we're still going to, the board will still look into it.
No, we're still pursue it. We want to make this, we want to make this experience as seamless as possible.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Machelli, you want to say something?
Yeah, Madam Chair, can I say just, I know it's late for everybody. I just, I spoke with Marie a while ago, a few people, a few fellow members, board members, expressed interest in participating in the Outreach Committee, Toby Moscovitz, Tion Brooks, Erin Drinkwater, and Janice Patterson, for now. Probably I misunderstood the process, as I'm new at that. I thought I was waiting for Marie to have a date on the calendar that would not interfere with other committee members that have other meetings. So I'm waiting for that, so we can start having a meeting. And definitely, I had other comments from the community. There is definitely several issue about outreach. There is liquor license, there is like, you know, a small business, there is an issue with how you participate, and also issue how we let the community know about things beyond the capability, the current capability of our boards. So it will be very interesting. I can't explore them by myself. But so we're just looking forward to have a time, a date, so we can officially be put on the calendar. And also, so one issue that I've been asked to bring tonight, why do the date of our meeting come back just three days before or two days before the meeting? You know, any way we could change this? So, you know, we internally know that there is a meeting a week before, but it would be great so people can plan around, you know, for different issues. That's all.
I I need a list of people that you said want to be on your committee. I haven't seen the list.
I thought you already had the list, maybe it was a misunderstanding when I spoke with Marie. But today, Jerry clarified, I will make an, I will send an official email directly to you, by our Toby Moscovitz, Tion Brooks, Erin Drinkwater, and Janice Patterson.
Okay, send me, send me the list.
I'll send an official list.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I understand, I understand Ben Silotar is here, he want to speak.
He can unmute himself, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ben.
Okay, sorry, I know it's late. Just, I wanted to applaud the work that the Land Use Committee is doing, and they're looking into into manufacturing in the area and land use issues, and trying to do some comprehensive overview. As Del said, happy to participate in that process. But the committee is asking a lot of good questions and happy to offer whatever support we can. Participatory budgeting is actually still is going on this year. It's been a little bit low key, and we've been trying to get the word out. There's only three districts in the city. Well, there's one in Manhattan, but we're not going to mention that. There's three districts in Brooklyn that are doing PB. They're only three that kept doing it throughout the pandemic. Our district, Brad Lander and Carlos Munchakas, we're a little keeping the PB flame alive. There's a town hall on Tuesday night. It's on various social meet on Thursday night, sorry, Thursday, another day, you know, it's now about PB, citywide process, as well as the districts. All the information is at stevenlevin.nyc for his process, or you can email me. Deadline for idea submission is the end of the month. And we're only doing expense projects, not capital this year. And happy to talk about the RAD programs, too, if that happens. We have, we share three of the districts with Evelyn, and we have one in the other end of our district. Very complicated question, but hoping to be part of that conversation. So thank you for everybody. Congratulations to everybody who got elected tonight. Look forward to working with everybody on the board in 2021.
Thank you, Eric.
Ben.
I mean, Ben, I'm so sorry. Excuse me.
It's okay.
I'm tired. Is there any anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Dialis, someone in the chat is asking when the recordings of these meetings will become available online.
Jerry, Marie, can you tell us how soon we can have this ready?
As soon as we can get it up to, it'll be on YouTube. So there'll be a sheet with the on on our website that has the links on it. But it'll be on YouTube, and usually it takes 24 hours to do. Okay?
Okay, thank you so much, Marie. If there's nothing else, can I have a motion through the turn? Motion.
Motion.
Okay.
Only on seconds.
Everybody.
Good night. Stay safe.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. What a mess.